I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. Present is Ms. Pitko, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Dr. Jones, Ms. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Jacobson is at a parent meeting at Fairfield Little High School. She will be a little bit late. Mr. Asa unfortunately has a back injury and is at home watching. He apologizes that he couldn't make it tonight, but we told him to stay and take care of himself because we have a busy month ahead. So with that, I'm going to ask you all to please rise for the pledge. And Ms. Pitko, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Welcome back. Happy New Year, everybody. Before we get started, I'm just going to do a little switching around. If there is no objection from the board, I'm going to ask if we can swap two agenda items. Switch Agenda Item 7A, the Acceptance of the Fairfield Lodo Extension Alteration, with Dr. Jones's budget presentation. We have the Building Committee Chair here, and we just would like to add a courtesy to him, let him present first. Any objections? Seeing no objections, we will move forward with our student reports. Ms. Phillips, would you like to go first?
All right. So Ludlow recently had its annual Bella Boutique. It's the annual consumer science boutique, as the name implies, and it was a huge success. It's set up in the FLHS library, and they sell a variety of nifty gifts, scarves, jewelry, and other great things. We also had Career Day, which is Mrs. Gorman of FLHS's College and Career Center. She sets that up, and she was able to host and manage all these speakers on December 7th. We had guests ranging from Yale professors to business leaders to the actual voice of Kermit the Frog. Student hosts ensured a smooth and fun day filled with both academic classes and engaging speakers. We also had the pep rally. Faculty and staff surprised the entire Ludlow student body with perhaps one of the best flash mobs of 2018. Not only was this incredibly entertaining, but it brought the Ludlow community together like nothing before it and created quite the welcoming environment. Tonight is also Junior Parent Night, in which parents and students come to Ludlow to learn about Naviance, the college application process, and schedule times to meet with their guidance counselors. Counselors also gave informative Naviance tutorials in English classes this week, responding to any questions or concerns regarding the program and the college process. At Ludlow, we really feel prepared for the future.
The FLHS Compassion Committee gift card collected over $2,400, which was distributed during the holidays to help FLHS families who are facing difficult situations. A holiday toy drive for the Wakeman Boys and Girls Club and a pajama fun drive were also successful in helping those in need. This Friday, we have the senior volleyball tournament for those who qualified in their gym classes, so that's always a fun competitive thing for the seniors. And then for sports, the wrestling team won four to one at Trumbull, their Trumbull Duel, taking third place out of 10 teams. And the boys' basketball beat prep over the Holiday Classic game 46 to 42 in overtime.
Our music ensembles performed several Caroline shows just before break. They performed for the Ward students, the community, and also the incoming eighth graders. So it was a very talented show, and they got everyone in the holiday spirit. The holiday basketball tournament took place over a break between the four Fairfield High Schools, so it was a very competitive and spirited tournament. Ward came out in first place with a one-point win over Ludlow, so that was also a very spirited game. The wrestling invitational also happened this past weekend. It was hosted at Ward. Around 15 other schools came, and Ward came out with another first-place win, so we're very proud.
At Ward, we also had our winter sports pep rally, which we really did rally there, as Ward always does, and we exercised our dynamic part of the acronym. And at this time, seniors are making preparations to meet that generous January 15 deadline, and some of us are very relieved to have finished the January 1 deadline for college applications. And of course, hope that everyone had an exciting and also relaxing break.
Any questions for our high schoolers from Ludlow and Ward? No? Thank you, guys. You're welcome to stay, or you can leave us now and get on with your evening. Okay, moving on to public comment. Just a reminder, public comment is for Agenda Items only. There will be public comment prior to all votes. We ask that you just speak once to a topic, so if you speak now, you can speak again later before the vote. Public comment is limited to three minutes, so I invite any speakers to come up. Please state your name and your address for the record.
I am Jerianne Mitchell. I'm a speech and language pathologist at the Early Childhood Center. We appreciate your open-mindedness and receptiveness to both the staff and the families as we present our continued concerns about the Early Childhood Center's future. We truly appreciate the thoughtful, reflective nature that you are using and using all the input to make your decisions. We have stressed the importance of ECC remaining a centralized setting. Our early childhood outcomes, despite the class sizes and ratios, really speak to our efficacy and should not be overlooked. It's really critical, in our opinion, to have a long-term plan before we agree upon a short-term plan. Redistricting is on the agenda for all the schools in the future. We request that the administration and the Board of Ed commit to a plan for the ECC to be unified and centralized, possibly as part of this redistricting. It's important to look at the long-term planning from the beginning. Given the heterogen-- it's too easy to establish two sites and allow this to become the norm. It would be-- given the current heterogeneity of the programs as proposed, it's going to be difficult to compare the future outcomes and efficacy. Additionally, the proposed design for two sites with the CLC to be solely at the ECC Ward site, as well as the site for non-ambulatory children, children using walkers, wheelchairs, or just learning to walk, creates an inherent inequity in provision of services for both programs. There's not an equal continuation of services in each location. We really need to plan for continued growth, and the short-term solution is potentially limited. We need to learn from our past history. In 2003, the ECC was relocated from Ludlow to Ward. The decision to centralize the program resulted from multiple relocations of the ECC, or as most people know, ECDEC, the Early Childhood Developmental Education Center, our previous name. Due to program growth, feeder patterns, different kids going in different classrooms, or the actual individual school growth, when the ECC program was housed in that school and that school's growth required the relocation, the lack of impact, the impact of space for our program. You know, our plea is simple. You know, we'd like to maintain the successful ECC design that we currently have. Centralization would allow all programs to continue to grow and provide the continuum of care that's always benefited our students. Our outcomes support the need, the continued need, for a centralized model to meet the unique needs of our preschool population in a setting that allows a dedicated focus to meet the needs of our students. Again, we truly thank you for hearing our concerns and putting our students' needs paramount.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to Acceptance of the Ludo Building Project. Mrs. Gerber? I will make the motion first. It's a little game at home, how many times I can like just mess up Robert's rules, little bingo card that you can play along. Can I have a motion to please accept the FLH-- make a motion that the Board of Education accept FLH Extension Alteration Energy Conservation and Roof Replacement Project Number 051-0127 as complete? Can I have a motion? Mr. Peterson? Second by Ms. Pitko. Now, Mrs. Gerber, would you like to give us a little background information?
Yes. Actually, I just did want to give this to board members. This is just a financial summary of the project that we just received today from Gilbane, just so you can kind of get a sense of the cost and where we are in the project from a financial perspective. So this project has been a very long one, and I'm very happy to say that it is at completion in terms of the actual work, and the committee just has a couple of invoices that they need to approve, that they've then-- basically, they've kind of compressed the committee into just the executive committee, which is the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, and they'll take care of the last kind of bit of paperwork. But I'd like to have the Chair, Mark Donald, come up. He's been the Chair the entire six years of this project, and just wanted to have him just give a couple of words about the project, and if anyone has any questions, feel free.
Okay. So Mark Donald, Chairman, Fairfield Lodo Building Committee, the entire project, and happy to say we're nearing completion, all but the last nuts and bolts. So, you know, as you know, our charge was to add four classrooms, two science labs, add a new roof based on the one that was blown off in 2011 now, and make sure that we have the space protected inside, and then replace and remediate PCB-impacted windows. So I'm happy to say that over the Christmas break, we finalized the last little touch-ups of paint and finished up some of the window treatments, ensured that a leak was repaired over the roof, and now have, I think, two to three invoices to approve from the construction manager, the architect, and the remediation specialist. And we're hoping to, as you see, return around $460,000 to the town based on the last request for funding. So that's the first time I've ever been cheered in my life, but that's-- I'll take it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We're hoping to go to finish the invoices by the end of next week, at least the end of the month, and then go to the selectmen for a dismand based on the approval of the Board of Ed here.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
One comment and then one question. First of all, you know how when someone's a first elected president and they get a photograph of them then, and then their photograph at the end of their term? I'm just curious what a picture of you before this all started versus now would look like. But first of all, so thank you so much for your service in this, and all of the Building Committee members, and obviously, Mrs. Gerber, for also being someone who saw this through from beginning to end. But my only question is, beyond the things that you can't anticipate, what are things with this Building Committee, this whole process, that you warn a future Building Committee about? You know, whether it's something that the Board could have done differently, the town could have done differently, or was everything that made this the project that it was not something that could have been anticipated?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and depending on how much time we have, I'll keep it brief. But one, I've had wrinkles since I was 25. The gray, not so much. Two, I think, you know, the process is one that I think we embarked on at the beginning as a new process for how the funding was obtained and requested. And I think, you know, part of it, at the time, we had separated the project manager, the construction manager, and the architect. So I think there, you know, starting off that on the professional side, we didn't have so much kind of institutional and town knowledge over time, and I think, you know, as I, you know, fresh to a town project and a Building Committee, coming at it from an educator perspective, you know, what I know now versus what I know then is immense. But I think, you know, having some sort of, and I certainly understand this is more than just a Board of Ed decision, some sort of town project manager for building projects would be helpful, because I think there's so many nuances and quirks within the town and within the nature of some of our buildings that they can maybe anticipate some of the things we ran into. Obviously, you know, finding out that there's, you know, there was more PCBs than expected, those things are always going to pop up in older buildings. You know, I think moving forward and looking back, you know, we've been very fortunate to have certain other Building Committee Chairs who have a lot of kind of professional knowledge, you know, speaking-- I've admired Mr. Flynn's work from afar, and I know he's been consistent through a lot, so that's helpful, I think, as well. But I think it's something that I'd be happy to participate in, a really in-depth kind of autopsy or after-action review, you want to say, to make this process work better for the town.
Thank you. Ms. Gerber?
Just one other person I want to recognize is Sal Morbido, who came to pretty much every-- all the meetings we were at, and then some, and so just, he did a tremendous amount of work and put in a tremendous amount of time. And Mr. Hatsis, too. He was at a lot of those meetings as well.
As a Ludo parent and as a past PTA president who sat through some of those meetings and was part of the process for a short while, I thank you for your years of service and for your diligence in seeing the project to completion and making sure that, you know, everything was done to the highest standard. So thank you, and without any further ado, can I have another motion to move up? Okay, so that's O?
O two.
O two. Any public comment? Thank you, Mr. Donald. You can return to your seat.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Hatsis, Headmaster, Fairfield Lodo High School. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank Mr. Donald and the entire Building Committee, past and present, the members. It has been a long, arduous process, but I want to report back to you guys that it is well worth all the work, all the heartache, and all the sweat. As we enter winter, teachers are recognizing that their rooms are much warmer than they were in years past because of the updated windows. The cafeteria expansion is filled to capacity every day for three lunch waves, and the new classrooms that were added are full of classes every day, and we're using them to full capacity as well. The roof has also been a blessing. There have been a few breaches here and there over the last couple of years after the new one went on, but they have been really speedy with fixing those situations. So it's been a huge effort, and I want to just thank you all for your support through the years, and I definitely would recommend approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on this? Okay. Can I have a motion that the Board of Education accept the FLH Extension Alteration Energy Conservation Roof Replacement Project 051-0127 as complete? Mrs. Gerber?
All of us promoting that. You already made the question.
All in favor? Ms. Pitko, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes. Eight. Nothing. Does anybody have bingo yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? All right. Approval--
Adoption of policy.
Adoption of policy, 5141.21, Students Administration of Medication in the Schools. At this point, we've-- at the request of the Policy Committee, we are going to postpone this, delay this to the next meeting. We found out late today that there were some questions about some of the language that we just want to double-check the statute, double-check with staff, so this will appear on a future agenda. If there's no objection from the Board, seeing none, moving right along. Approval of the second location for ECC, September 2019. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approves Stratfield Elementary School as a second location for ECC, beginning September 2019. Do I have a motion? Mr. Dwyer? Second, Mr. Peterson? Any questions, comments? Dr. Jones, do you have anything you'd like to say about this, moving us forward?
Just because the public may not be aware, but all of the Board members, almost all of the Board members did go and tour Stratfield at, I think, three different tours, so thank you for doing that. We've done a lot of work since the last meeting, which I have emailed the Board about, and you know, the-- working on the five-day schedule. One of the concerns the Board had at Stratfield was, could we adjust bus times at all? We were able to do that, we know, in the morning, so that they would arrive a little bit later and have a different time for arrival, not when everybody's arriving at the same time. So we have made a lot of adjustments. We have looked at the feeder pattern as well, mixing that between the Ludlow and the Ward so that it would be a mixed feeder pattern, and we have-- I have sent that to the Board as well. So if you have any questions for me tonight, I'm happy to answer those.
Ms. Pitko?
I don't have a question. I just comment, a reminder to everybody that we are trying to schedule special meetings in February to deal with some of our big facilities questions, and obviously, the ECC is going to come back up. Any decision we make as a Board on the other facilities may not happen for the fall of this year, may happen a year from now, because there's a lot of things to consider, including the ECC, you know, maybe remodeling or updating some facilities to meet criteria that we need. So I just think that's important for everybody to be aware, that we have such big decisions to make and that we are scheduling meetings to have those conversations and that we don't take any of this lightly.
Do you want me to add, short-term?
Yep.
Yeah. And along with that, I would say, one of the questions that I think staff have received is, what is short-term and what is long-term? And I think the Board is obviously going to have to have that conversation. I think in all transparency, to me, short-term is five to 10 years when we're talking about a school facility, because our school facilities last for 50 when we're talking about long-term. Are we going to be able, as a Board, to have a conversation that takes that in a different direction? But I think from a staff perspective of what we have available in facilities, the enrollment growth, what we see on the horizon, that's just being transparent about it.
Any additional comments or questions? Ms. Pitko?
I'm going to vote tonight based on the need of our student for this fall. I particularly would not like to see these kids here past a year. I would like to see a long-term solution for these students. I think we would do them an injustice not to give them a long-term solution.
Any-- Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
I echo the notion that I would, and I completely understand the idea of the five to 10. I mean, I likewise would hope for something that's sooner than that, and obviously, that's where those February discussions are going to play. We will, I think, have direction for the district, you know, very shortly, and then we'll know exactly what kind of a timeframe that we are talking about. I don't see a year as being possible, given the options that we've looked at. I think, I just don't think we will be able to. Again, once we make these decisions and see what kind of budget implications it's going to have and the, you know, holistic approach to all of this, but I do agree with the idea that I hope we can do it sooner than that, and I look forward to those February conversations.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, just very briefly, I agree very much with Ms. Pitko and Ms. Maxine Cannelly that, and obviously with the Chair, that we are going to be dealing with this in great detail coming up, and this is not-- I don't want this to slide from being a short-term solution to being a permanent solution. I don't think anyone at this table feels that way. But I also want to say that having dealt with Dr. Jones and Ms. McGoy at Stratfield, I do have a lot of confidence that this is a good, this is a good short-term solution. This is not simply a patch, but I do have high hopes that the children will flourish at that Stratfield location and that it will be satisfactory until we can come up with a broader plan. I don't want anyone to feel like we're saying Stratfield is in any way deficient.
Anybody else? I'd also just like to thank Strat, the staff of the ECC and Stratfield for just being so open. There were a lot of visits that we all went and, you know, took up some of your time, and it was very helpful. I mean, I had a child at the ECC, and I learned something new every time I go. To echo my fellow Board members' comments, I also don't see this as a long-term solution. I appreciate Dr. Jones's transparency in terms of defining what a short-term solution may be from the staff perspective, but we are meeting in February. Our dates are February 20th and February 27th. We have confirmed that with all Board members. Everybody can be in attendance. We're going to work out what those meetings are going to look like, but we are going to move forward, and I think that the sentiment of this Board is to discuss a long-term solution and how that fits in with the long-term plan for our district. So that is where we are with that, and I encourage you just to keep on advocating to us and to other town bodies and to continue to just share your thoughts with us. So thank you. Any last? Okay, so go to the public now? Any public comment? Seeing none? That the Board of Education, that the Board of Education approve-- no, out of order, say this kind of-- that the Board of Education approve Stratfield Elementary School as a second location for ECC, beginning September 2019. All in favor? Ms. Pitko, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson. It's unanimous, eight zero. Thank you. Okay, so we are switching around. Presentation of the Superintendent's Proposed 2019-2020 Operating Budget.
We have a-- Yes, yes. And you do have to hand out at your seat if you want to take notes.
You do?
Or are you getting those done now?
Remember, these are secret documents.
Yes, yes, that's right.
And just before we-- just to remind the Board, this is the presentation. We're not going to be doing Q and A on this tonight. We'll start that next week.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Good evening to Chair Vitale, wherever she went, Vice Chair Asaya, who is at home watching, Secretary Gerber, members of the Board. I'm delighted to present our Fairfield budget for 2019-2020. Well, I guess not, so just a moment.
You know where it is? Yeah, there's two of them there. I don't know why it did that. So just start.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. So I'm delighted to present the 2019-2020 budget. First of all, in the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, there's a lot of work that goes into play from September all the way through January. We look at the current 1819 budget very carefully, what's working, what's not. We review the district improvement plan. We look at new enrollment projection data, and that is taken every year on October the 1st. That is our legal date for enrollment. We also meet with headmaster and principal teams. We gather all of our projection data. We look at estimated fixed costs. We meet with all of our department leaders, and then, of course, we gather all of our local, state, and federal funding information. In the budget presentation tonight, we'll have four sections: historical revenue and expense, demographics, and enrollment. We'll talk about some of the budget challenges this year and considerations, and then we'll look at the 2019-20 proposed budget. So let's start out with the historical revenue and expense. So how do we spend our money? This pie chart really does not change a lot from year to year, and you'll find almost every school district in the country looks like this. We are a people business, so the bulk of our budget is staff salaries and benefits, and that is not unusual. For us, you'll notice that operations and maintenance is right behind those two categories. How do we spend our dollars that we actually spend on people? This is very important for a school district, and this does change across the country. And in Fairfield, we do a very good job making sure that our salaries are going to those direct classroom support. We like that number to be between 75 and 80, and we want it to stay there. If you look at all of the ancillary positions over on the side, we want administration to be low at central office. When we look at our per pupil expenditures, this is a graph that you have seen, a bar chart that you saw last year, and it is the 1617 audited. They do not have the newest 1718 out as of yet, but when you look at this, there's a lot of information. Across the bottom, you're looking at the Anglic ranking. That's basically the wealth ranking for the state of Connecticut, and Fairfield's pretty consistently between 16 and 20. When you look at the black bar right in the middle, that is the average per pupil spending for Fairfield County. We are-- We are, the one in yellow, just below the average. If we were funded at the average, there would be almost $20 million more in our budget. So, there's quite a disparity across Fairfield County. When we look at our historical budget trends, this year we went back to 2000, and we wanted to really look at what has our request been over time? Has it changed? What has happened since the economy really collapsed in 2009? And historically, we had much larger budget increases. Now, there were things happening in this section here. We opened Ludlow, we opened Burr. We were also having enrollment growth, but the interesting thing about the enrollment growth was it was targeted mainly at the elementary level, which is, which is more economical from a budget standpoint. What's happened since 2009 is we are averaging at about a 2.2% budget increase. Over here, it was seven. If you take out those two really high years, it was about 6%. So, we've really changed in how we are budgeting and funding for our budget increases. We are working to do our part on savings and revenue. This year, the school district performed two self-imposed audits. This was not an audit that the board or staff were asked to do. We did it because we thought it would give us good information. The first one is Troy and Banks Utilities and Phones Audit. And are we being billed appropriately? And are our utility, are our payments being paid in the way that they should be? And the answer to that is yes. So, we, this was an outgrowth of many of the questions we had last year because our utilities are rising, and you will see that in the budget book tonight. Our Special Education Audit. Is our eligibility in line with other districts? And you'll see that statistic in just a minute. Absolutely, yes, it is. Is our initial evaluation process efficient? And what that means by efficient, do the teachers have time to do what they need to do? Are housemasters at the high schools able to have enough time out in the classrooms to lead instruction and not in too many meetings? And the answer to that was no. And you'll see that reflected in the budget this year. We want to make some adjustments that we think are really going to help us as a school district. Are we turning in the right direction for providing in-house services for students? These are the programs we've been putting in, like CLC, CLCS at Riverfield this year, also our IMPACT program, our DBT, which has some individualized counseling groups, and also even the work we're doing at Walter Fitzgerald. And yes, we are having great success with those programs. And for the first time, really, I would say, in quite a few years, at least in the last five, this is a trend that we are very excited about, because our total gross projected tuition for special education in this year's budget was 9.3 million. Next year's budget, it's 8.9, so it's actually going down. And I can tell you, there are not many school districts in Connecticut that can have this slide this year, and that tells us the work we're doing with kids is great work, so we're excited about that. We have also adjusted the technology model, and we've added a couple of sheets in the budget book for you. Why did we go away from the CART model to individual student tablet model, which is the Chromebooks? And you will see that we will have a reduction in capital outlay over time, and that savings from making that change is $718,000, and that's really over a two-year period. Obviously, reprogramming the preschool, which we just discussed tonight, lowers caseload, will increase our peer ratio. We're happy about that for ECC. That saves $250,000 because you took two existing classrooms and converted those. So, what about some of the demographics and enrollment? Who is a Fairfield student? These are the students that enrolled with us this year, and you'll see that we have 88 students who actually go to mainly Bridgeport, enrolled in magnet schools, and those are full-time magnet schools. We have 109 students who basically go all over the state of Connecticut for outplace schools, and the total student population for all of the students who we fund through our budget right now is 9,986. When you look at our English language learners, you will see that this year we stayed pretty constant, 261 to 265. We still have 52 different countries of origin and 28 different languages, and of course, that can change from one month to the next, but it's a lot. This is, was an interesting statistic for us this year. Looking at students who are eligible for free and reduced meals, 15.4%. For decades, you can go back and look at Fairfield, we are generally around 8%. So, of course, that made us pause and say, why is this statistic different? What is happening this year? This is attributed to Medicaid. And if you remember in the 16-17 budget, when we had to start billing for Medicaid, that was something the state required. It's new for us, and with Medicaid, there is an automatic eligibility for free and reduced lunch. So, Medicaid is picking up students for free and reduced lunches that have never been picked up before, and we were not a district that did Medicaid billing, so that is new for us. Students with disabilities are at 12.1%. Again, we should be happy about that, that we're meeting students' needs. The state average is 14.5. And our graduation rate, we went ahead and left this in here, we were very happy about that, to report last year. Our 17-18, we have not been given our official graduation rate. We expect it to still be high. If we look at our 15-year historical enrollment, it, we have not seen huge changes, and you'll see our projection goes down slightly, not a whole lot. When we look at it grade by grade, this is what elementary looks like right now, and you'll see that elementary is in a trough where it's down just a little bit, but it's going to come right back up. And while that's not as important for this budget discussion tonight, I think the discussions we're going to have this year, especially about Mill Hill, it is very important that we are looking out at our projections. So, let's look at it from a middle school perspective. Middle school is very high right now, and that's partially, almost totally due to a very large cohort of students who will be in eighth grade next year. When they leave next year and go to high school, middle school will start a trough. But again, you can see where it will start coming back up again. High school is also high right now, and that is due part in that they came in ahead of their projection this year by about 74 students. And I don't, I'm not really sure that our projection is actually going to stay there. I think it's going to be higher next year, but we need more than one year to say it's a trend. We definitely saw more of a retention from our eighth grade to ninth grade migration, where students didn't leave us for private school, and Malona McBroom have checked that for us. But you'll see in high school, we stay high, then we come down again. So, when you look at the big picture for enrollment and what's going to be happening over time, we have elementaries down, it's going to go right back up. You're going to see middle school is high. It starts to go down before it comes back up. And then there's high school. So, it's not going to stop. Our trend is going to continue, because once you peak, all of these little elementary kids, where are they going to go? They're going to go to your middle school and your high school. So, it is going to continue. When we look at some of our teacher and staff demographics, we have 1,535 fabulous employees. And one thing a lot of people don't know is that 53% of our employees actually live in Fairfield. And most of this area in Fairfield County is not that way, so we should be proud about that. It also means that when we pay our teachers their salaries, most of their spendable income, the economists will tell you, actually infuse the local market. The other thing that's interesting to know is the rest of our staff come from mainly four areas: Bridgeport, Tremble, Stratford, and Milford. They also spend a tremendous amount of money locally in this region, but that's 90% of our staff. If you look at our certified staff members and what those credentials are, there are 790 women and 213 men in Fairfield, and I will say, this will be a gender statistic to watch, because they do say there's a decline of men who are going into education, and I hope that across the country, we will work on that and see that change. When I first looked at this data, I looked at 49 with a bachelor's, it seemed so low, but that, we're celebrating that, because we have extremely highly qualified staff. 445 hold a master's degree, 493 have a year or two years beyond that, and 16 of our staff hold a doctorate. We have an amazing group of certified teachers. When we talk about stretching limited dollars, we're really, this year, dealing with five fixed costs. And those of you that have been watching school budgets for years know, these don't change a whole lot. The one area that's new for us this year is its operations and maintenance, and that is becoming more of a challenge in Fairfield, and I think in a lot of districts along Fairfield County. Last year, you would have seen, and the year before, tuition. Special education tuition would have needed an extra $1.1 million. And again, that's not part of it this year. We have cost savings there. So, let's look at what's happening in the benefits. So, the highest benefit that generally a school district will see is your health insurance. And people will ask, is Connecticut 2.0 making a difference? We changed our healthcare. Absolutely, it is. We have a projected rate right now of 7%, and just as a reminder for the board and the community, that can change through the spring, but that does come from Aon, so they're projecting 7%. In many of the other insurance plans that are not part of Connecticut 2.0, it's not unusual to see 10 and 15% increases. So, although it is an increase, 7% is not bad. Pension and retirement, this additional 149, those are our employees who are in the town pension, non-certified staff. So, out of our benefits increase of 1.7 million, 1.4 is for health insurance. So, if we look at operations and maintenance of buildings, this year, there are three areas that I would say are a challenge for us in making sure that we are funding our schools appropriately. The first one is looking at the utility service, and electric, the electricity budget is up 12%, and we have added an extra page on utilities in the budget book towards the back to give you more information. We also have a 2.4% consumption increase, and that's because we are adding air conditioning at Holland Hill and also at Sherman next year. That's what that primarily is. A heating rate increase of almost 10%, so just our utilities alone are a half million dollars. Maintenance services, that is almost every category you can think of in the maintenance budget, and Mr. Cullen will be going over that in detail with you. Everything from ADA compliance to all of the issues we've had with buildings that you've heard about this year, they all come from those line items. Looking at maintenance, repair, and supplies, that's plumbing, HVAC, vehicle parts. And that increase alone is 1.1 million dollars in this budget, an 11.67% year-over-year, and it's needed. Our staff salaries, when we look at our total projected, these are all of our staff in Fairfield, we have an increase of 4.6 million dollars just in staff salaries this year. And I want to remind you that compared to 18-19, that's an increase of 3.12%. That's really not a huge percentage increase, but again, just to remind you, we have a lot of staff. We are a large organization with over 1,500 employees. In fact, Fairfield Schools is the largest employer in Fairfield. We are larger than Sacred Heart. We are larger than Fairfield University. We are the largest employer in Fairfield. We are also considered to be in one of the 100 largest employers in all of Fairfield County, and in fact, we are in the top 20. We are a large organization. When you look at some of the budget considerations to help improve Fairfield's budget, we look at our retirement analysis. This was new for us in 16-17, and we used it again last year. We are applying the same analysis this year, thank you to Dr. Rasmussen, who does this for us. What you're seeing here is, on the left, is the likelihood that somebody will retire across the ages, the 55 and older, and this is sample analysis, not our actual staff this year. And what we do is, we take every person who is 55 and older, that is our certified staff, and we look at the data over a 10-year period, and what is the percentage? What is the probability that somebody will retire? We then apply that to the number of employees that we have at those different age categories. That's how we come up with a number that is about as fine-tuned as it can be to calculate retirements. We also have what we call teacher turnover savings. These are our four people up here who are getting ready to retire, thinking about that. Down below, this is, this little guy just can't wait to start teaching. These teachers moved maybe from other districts, but what happens with teacher turnover is if we have really high turnover, we actually have more savings in this category. Doesn't mean it's great for the district. We don't want teachers to leave. But when teachers turn over, for instance, with retirement, if these four teachers are earning $90,000 each, then we're paying $360,000 in salaries. So, if we hire newer staff and the salaries are around $70,000, we have those same four positions replaced for less money, and that gives us $80,000 to move somewhere else in the budget. But if, in fact, we calculate this incorrectly, we can have a hole, and it can make the budget a little bit more challenging. So, we're going very conservative with this this year, because we did see a higher retention rate of our staff, which was great. That was a good thing, but it also means we need to be more conservative in the budget with our teacher turnover savings. When we look at budget eliminations, these are requests or reductions that were not included in the budget, and I think this is really important. It's important for staff to see it. It's important for the board. It's important for the community. Our budget is not a wish list of what everybody just wants. It is what we truly believe we need. This year was a very challenging budget in that we had $3.7 million that did not get included in this budget. There are 21 requests for new staff, and that's across all of our schools. Actually, we had some non-certified as well. K-8 entrance security was something we really thought about. We do have a new chief in town, so having another year to work on that is going to be okay. Maintenance and operations projects, although that's a huge driver in our budget, we still cut out almost $1 million in what Mr. Cullen believed we should be doing with maintenance and operations. Additional custodial staff. We have added over 100,000 square feet in the last decade, and we have not added custodial So, talk about some of the targeted enhancements and enhancing the student experience. It's not all doom and gloom. Those are the tough things that we deal with in budget. These are the fun things. Our early childhood center, we are adding new positions in the budget. The board did allow us to convert two of those. And just as a reminder, I think this white, this little white strip up here is really important. Preschool is required by federal law for children who have special needs from the age of three, and really from birth to three, but for public school, it starts at three. And it's really important, because we don't have universal pre-K in Fairfield, which some people believe we do, open for all children. It is required by federal law, but we're excited we're going to be able to bring our caseloads down and do some great things with early childhood. We're also creating high school evaluation teams with this budget, and again, this was supported from the audit. We have 1.0 teacher evaluation team position. We have a 1.0 high school coordinator. Currently in Fairfield, we have one coordinator who services both of those high schools. It is an almost impossible job. This position is needed, and again, in the audit, it supported both of these, and I think this is going to have a huge impact for our high school to have evaluation teams. CLCS for middle school, as you know, our complex learner cohort for social-emotional, and we added this at Riverfield this year for our elementary program. We have been absolutely delighted, seen great success. We now need to move this to the middle school. And this is a program, we already have supports at the high school, from DBT, from IMPACT, all of those programs that we've put in, but our middle school really doesn't have this, and there's a great need for it. And that requires a 1.0 CLCS teacher, 1.0 social worker. We want to complete our implementation of STEAM that's in our district improvement plan and for K-2. This requires 1.9 of FTE, full-time equivalent, that means it's pieces at different schools, for K-2 STEAM. And this will allow us to continue our next-generation science standards, really making sure we're starting those at an early age, and also enhancing our vision of the graduate and the work we want to do for our youngest learners. And I, these pictures are very intentional, because we want people to see what STEAM is all about. It's very much about hands-on collaboration. It really is critical thinking and creating, all of the things that we want to see for our children. Our innovative learning in year two, we want to complete our distribution. We have two grade levels left at middle school, and I will say, I'm not sure we're always consistent in how we talk about this. It's two grades at middle school. We had Chromebooks in seventh grade this year. Those will move with those children to eighth grade, so the actual physical devices will go to sixth and seventh graders who didn't have them, but the grade level from a teacher perspective and in implementation is six and eight, but it's two grades in middle school. And you'll notice that the tech capital outlay budget request is the lowest it's been in the last five years, not more. We also have some other additional enhancements in here that we just want to mention. We are trying to increase planned time for our elementary teachers. We expect that to happen. We want support, continued support for NGSS, and that's across the district. Our DBT program, which we've talked about the last two years that we're having great success with, will be in year two of our high school IMPACT program, which is ran by our staff. Our MINDUP will be complete for K-5. We are also in this budget adding a maintenance position, is greatly needed for all of the facilities challenges that we're having, and continuing... facilities challenges that we're having, and continuing to enhance our SRBI and our interventions across pre-K through 12. Okay, thank you to Jan for that. Our 2019-2020 Superintendent's Proposed Budget, again, the pie chart does not look wildly different than what you're used to seeing. It's salaries, it's people, but you'll notice this piece is a little bit bigger in operations and maintenance. Transportation's about the same, tuition a little bit smaller. So the changes at a glance this year and what we are, what I am proposing as your school superintendent, is a 4.9% increase, 4.99. And the three areas that are in yellow are in yellow for a reason, because this budget is primarily staff salaries and benefits, operations and maintenance of building. We've managed to do all of those other enhancements and implementations for less than 1% in the budget, actually 0.65. And the total FTE for all of the enhancements in this budget is 2.9. We're asking for 2.9 staff to make all of that happen to sustain and maintain a great school district. So there are upcoming meeting dates, and this is for the community. We have next Tuesday, the following Tuesday after that, and then on Thursday, the 24th, is when the Board of Education, we hope, will be able to approve. There's a lot of work that will take place between now and then, and questions from the board, community, staff, and as we work through the process. I will say, this year for the first time, we present to Board of Selectmen separately from Board of Finance, so there will be extra meetings in there. But right now, we actually have windows of time, and we will have to publish those dates once those bodies are able to give those to us. So that is our 2019-2020 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. Thank you.
are targeted enhancements, instructional services, supplies, text materials, other purchase services, tuition, contracted services and capital. So it is by topic.
This will be on the budget page tomorrow? The budget, will it be posted?
It will all be up by tomorrow, by tomorrow afternoon.
Mr. Dwyer?
That page is not in the window.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
What is in mine?
It's not there.
This one is in your budget. That was in your, it's actually in your planning book where that shows up, the one that's skinny one. The topics. We can send that back out.
So just to remind you, we, on the school district's website, there is a separate budget page that the budget will be posted. The presentation will be posted starting tomorrow. As we move forward in the budget process, board members will be submitting questions. Questions and answers will also be published, so I encourage anyone watching, members of the audience, to check the website, just to get the most up-to-date information. We also have a, the PTA Brown Bag Lunch is this Thursday at 11 o'clock here in the Board of Ed Conference Room for any PTA members that want to attend. The budget books are going to be sent to the school for PTA. So PTA, any PTA people, your budget books, you will be getting them through the school. Any initial, no questions right now about the budget, but if anybody has, just quick?
I wanted to know, is there a date, time that you need us to submit questions back for next Tuesday's meeting in time to be able to answer them and get them back to the board?
Yeah, I'm really hoping, because it's 8:30, you can get home tonight and start studying and send them as quickly as possible. We actually, we'll send them out, the answers all the way up until Tuesday if we have to. But it's very difficult for staff if we get everything Monday, Tuesday. So if you, at least over the weekend, could send as much as you can, and Friday would be even better.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, and just briefly, I was interested to hear that the utility audit, is that something that we'll be able to have materials on before the 22nd meeting?
Well, right now with this utility audit, they literally give us like one page that says they're not finding anything, and we will talk about that. But in the back of your budget book, we've tried to add some additional information. The solar is there, the electric rates are there, and we took those back over five years for electric and heat, so you can see what's happening with the utilities increases. But the audit right now, and we could talk about this during the budget, but they're really not finding anything, which is, which is good, but.
Sure.
Ms. Jacobson, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Do you have any other questions? Okay. Ms. Pico?
Did we add January 31st BOA proposed budget to Town Hall? Because it's in the book and it's up there, but I just.
It goes to Town Hall. We don't have to do it.
Oh, we don't have to show up. Okay.
Any additional questions, just about process? Okay. So we have reading to do. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Welcome.
Okay, first reading to approve staff recommendations for high school course weights. Dr. Jones, do you want to give any initial comments on this?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Cummings to do the introduction, and then we'll ask our headmasters to come forward, please.
Is there going to be a presentation?
Yes, there will be a presentation.
Speak for yourself for the phone.
Good evening. My name is Mike Cummings. I'm the Chief Academic Officer. And I just want to make a couple of comments before our headmasters do the bulk of this presentation for you this evening. Our presentation this evening focuses on a proposal to adjust our high school GPA weights. When changes in the graduation requirements were finalized in October, we began to meet regularly to develop the regulations to support those new requirements. The conversation has expanded to include existing concerns with course naming and with the current GPA scale. As you will learn tonight, we established criteria to address our concerns, and we firmly believe we have met that criteria. At the core, we are looking to establish transparency and honesty in the new scale. Please note that there are as many varieties of GPA scales as there are high schools. Our proposal reflects our administrators' understanding of our high school students, our staff, and our curriculum. The impending publication of the Course of Studies required us to work quickly over the past two and a half months and brings us here tonight. Our Headmasters and Directors of Pupil Personnel Services and Guidance have put in many hours to prepare this work and this presentation, and many thanks to them.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Before we start the presentation, Mr. Ebling and I have a few opening comments as well. First of all, we want to acknowledge and recognize that if you do not have a student at the high school level, some of this can be really hard to understand and can be very confusing at times. And so we appreciate that for our public and for parents and as well for board members. It's, it can get very confusing. So we thank you for your patience through all of that. When policies and practices are created at the schools, obviously, well-meaning and smart people put these things together. What we're talking about changing tonight has been in place for many, many years in the Fairfield Public Schools. And frankly, as with anything, as things evolve and as things change, oftentimes, the original intent was either lost or it doesn't have the same meaning as it once did. That is the case with what's going on right now with our GPA scale. And also, what has happened is that because of some changes, there are now inaccuracies and some inconsistencies, and part of the proposal is to rectify those. This is really about helping students. This is about helping them achieve what they need for the next level beyond high school. Colleges and employers deserve to be able to look at a high school transcript and not be confused, and that is what is happening now. That is part of why we're also proposing some of our changes. Ultimately, our goal is for students to not be choosing courses based on what they think the GPA weights are, or how it will impact them. We want students to choose their courses based on what is right for them and for their program of study. So we don't, we want to make sure everyone knows here, there was never an intention in any way, shape, or form for us to make these changes to incentivize or de-incentivize our students for making choices about their courses. This is about making sure that we can be clear to the next level what is going on for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Hassis. David Ebling, Headmaster at Fairfield Ward High School. I'd like to take an opportunity to also recognize some of the people that were involved in our decisions and proposal tonight. Some of them are here, Ms. Montorcy and Ms. Campbell, our Director of Student Services, and our Housemasters, Mr. Fecetti, Mr. Keating, and Mr. Simonson are here as well. So as you know, these kind of decisions are not made in a vacuum, or these proposals by just Greg and I. We met, we joined high school leadership, we worked with our Directors of Curriculum, and we worked with our departments in making some of these recommendations, and there's many aspects to it. The piece that involves all of you certainly is what brings us here tonight. And you're familiar, I'm sure, with the board policy, but if we just want to move to our next slide, it's what brings us here this evening, and you recognize this policy that asks that we make a recommendation for approval to the Superintendent and then present it to the Board of Education. So we wanted to give Dr. Jones a break this evening, because she did a great job proposing the budget, so we thought we'd make the presentation to you on the GPA changes that we're looking forward to recommending. So our proposed new scale is pretty straightforward. We're looking at three levels, the AP, honors, and college prep, and we'll explain the changes that we have from the current one, but it's based on a 5.0 scale for an A. This is fairly common. As you'll see, we'll give you some information about other schools and other districts that use this similar. But I go back to a comment by Mr. Cummings, there are as many GPA scales as there are high schools, very similar to the schedule that we came back to you several years ago when we went to the block schedule. There's no perfect high school schedule that meets the needs of every high school in the nation, and the same is true for the proposed scales. What we hear is that people want transparency and they want clarity, and that's what we're hoping to achieve by these proposals.
Okay, so this is just a quick run-through of the comparison of the proposed scale with the current scale, and just to make things easier to view, we simplified the scales down to the main letter grade. We are not proposing eliminating pluses and minuses, but it's just really to look, to make it easier to see. I'll point your attention to the legend at the bottom right there, so that you understand that in our current scale, those of you that are not familiar with it, what we call Level 1 currently is also in fact referred to as honors. So in the new scale, we're just going to call it honors, no longer calling it Level 1. The Level 0 scale is basically the unleveled classes, and Level 2 is our college prep courses, and we are again, we're eliminating the word level and just keeping the college prep. So the first comparison is if you look at, obviously, the two scales, you'll notice that the new scale has only three levels compared to four from before. Second comparison is that the new scale increment between levels is a .5, whereas it is a .3 in the current scale. You'll notice that the new scale does not have what is now referred to as Level 0. And finally, the college prep slash Level 2 levels remain on a 4.0 scale. And just to clarify something, when we, when we call a scale by its name, by the number, it's referred to the grade that is associated with the A. And that is because at the college level, many colleges in fact do not even have A+es. It's not a grade that they give. So when colleges refer to a 4.0 scale, they're talking about what is an A. So we're going to be consistent with that language.
So how did we get here? Why are we here this evening? Why didn't this come up earlier when we were looking at graduation requirements, et cetera? What was the evolution of this? When we started looking at the graduation requirements and we were looking at courses and determining whether courses fell into the humanities category, or the STEM category, or were electives, we really started to examine our names and what the courses meant. And our names currently include numbers to them. Those of you that are familiar with the high school, we give you an example there. So English 11 currently indicates freshman honors, not Grade 11 English. So you can imagine sometimes when a college is looking at a transcript and they see Grade 9 and they see English 11, they're wondering why a freshman would be taking junior-level English. So our first number indicated the year that the course was traditionally taken, so in this case, 1 for ninth grade, and 1, the second number, being the level, as Mr. Hassis explained, indicating honors. So over time, this has created our inaccuracies and inconsistencies and sometimes caused confusion for parents, schools, and colleges and students. We often find this when we have people that are not familiar with our system, that come in to work at our, in our district, and they, it takes them a while to catch up with this language, because it is, for those of us that have been here a long time, very understandable, but for those that haven't, it takes a while for them to catch up on what we actually mean. So we thought we'd be clear in what we're proposing in terms of course names. But that's where this proposal started to evolve from initially.
So if it seemed obvious that Level 1 was going to become, we were going to call them honors classes, and Level 2 classes we're going to call college prep, the problem arose is what were we going to call Level 0? And so the next thing we had to address is the issues that were related to the Level 0 grade weighting column. For instance, and I'm going to use a visual here to help explain something. We couldn't necessarily call the classes college prep, because as you see here, half of the column, or almost half, from grades A+ to C, actually have the same exact weight as the Level 1 slash honors classes. However, if you're getting a C-, or below, then they were the same weights as the Level 2. So if a class that is currently a Level 0, if we call it honors, that would not be necessarily genuine, because it is, it doesn't have the scale of an honors class all the way through. Same with college prep. So in following here in 2A, Level 0 is the same weight as Level 1 for grades A+ to C, but then it is the same weight as Level 2, as you saw in the chart. Now, some courses had both honors and unleveled sections. An example of that is Precalculus 41, fourth year honors, and fourth year quote-unquote unleveled. Now, while these courses are two different rigor levels, students get the same weight for the grades at C and above. So as one thing that you might, you might conclude from that, is you know, you could have students choose to take Precalculus 40, which as a, as a lower rigor level course, doing different or less rigorous work, but still getting the same grade weight as a student in the 41 or the honors section. We did not feel like that was a consistency that we wanted to maintain. Since many of our electives are also weighted at Level 0, things like culinary arts and graphics and technology education, business courses, those Level 0 courses
0 grade weighting column. For instance, and I'm going to use a visual here to help explain something. We couldn't necessarily call the classes College Prep, because as you see here, half of the column, or almost half, from Grades A+ to C, actually have the same exact weight as the Level 1 slash Honors classes. However, if you're getting a C-, or below, then they were the same weights as the Level 2. So if a class that is currently a Level 0, if we call it honors, that would not be necessarily genuine, because it is, it doesn't have the scale of an honors class all the way through. Same with College Prep. So, in following here in 2A, Level 0 is the same weight as Level 1 for Grades A+ to C, but then it is the same weight as Level 2, as you saw in the chart. Now, some courses had both honors and un-leveled sections. An example of that is Precalculus 41, Fourth Year Honors, and Fourth Year quote-unquote un-leveled. Now, while these courses are two different rigor levels, students get the same weight for the grades at C and above. So as one thing that you might conclude from that, is you know, you could have students choose to take Precalculus 40, which, as a lower rigor level course, doing different or less rigorous work, but still getting the same grade weight as a student in the 41 or the honors section. We did not feel like that was a consistency that we wanted to maintain. Since many of our electives are also weighted at Level 0, things like Culinary Arts, and Graphics, and Technology Education, Business Courses, those Level 0 courses are getting a higher GPA weight than many of the core classes at Level 2. So just going back to the scale, if baking and pastry, 20, a student gets an A in that course, they would receive a 4.33 weight. But in College Prep Chemistry, College Prep US History, College Prep Algebra 2, they were getting a 4.0 for getting an A in the class, a lower weight. We also did not feel this was necessarily a practice we wanted to continue.
So, we started to investigate what colleges, I mean, we've been working on this for some time, actually, what colleges do with the GPA that we report to them. Currently, we're only reporting 1 GPA. That's based on the weighted scale that you see, that Mr. Hassas pointed out. We surveyed 164 colleges. Of those, a minority, 38% take the GPA at face value. That's at least what they're reporting to us. We're not exactly sure what that means, but that's what they're telling us. We take it at face value. Sometimes, as you're all aware, the whole college process is kind of a quandary, as to how the acceptance works. So, we're not really sure exactly what those schools are indicating when they say they take the GPA at face value. 62% of, clear majority, indicated that they use some other system. Most of them will, some of them, rather, will recalculate on a un-weighted 4.0 scale, only counting courses in Grades 9 and 11. Some reweight the GPA. Others only count academic classes. Some use the GPA that benefits the students. So, a lot of different answers, but a majority of them, clear majority, say they do their own thing. They take all the information, as Mr. Cummings said, there's as many GPA scales as there are high schools. They take it, and then trying to determine students that they want at their school, they're putting it into their own calculation and into their own formulas.
We also took a look at other high schools in the area, the Derg A and Derg B schools in particular, and what we saw was a, as Mr. Ebling pointed out, a wide number of approaches. But we saw some consistencies, such that almost every school provides weight to Honors and AP. There was one school district that only had one level. All courses were un-weighted. The other thing we saw were that no other courses weighed their elective courses above their other core area academic courses. And in our, in our case, we do that. Our Level 0 courses that are non-core electives are weighted higher than the core, some of the core electives that are Level 2, or even just core classes, let alone, not just electives, that are currently Level 2. Some schools, in fact, take elective courses and place them at an even lower weight than any other core area class. And that is not something that we recommend at all. One of the reasons why Level 0 existed in the first place was because it was to incentivize students to take those courses, because they were worried they would say something like, "Well, if I, if the elective course is weighed less than the courses I'm taking, it's going to bring my GPA down." And that is, you know, I think, one of the original reasons. We have a very rich elective program. We know that many students choose to take their electives because these are areas that they're very interested in. We do not feel that that is, that incentive is still an important part of our program. So by weighing them at the same as College Prep level, as is going to be proposed, we feel like we are accurately placing them and giving them the weight that they need, but not lowering the weight so that they, it becomes a disadvantage. We also found that many schools report both an un-weighted and weighted GPA. As Mr. Ebling pointed out, since many colleges are applying their own scale anyway that resemble an un-weighted GPA, where they strip away the weights and, you know, have their own system, we thought it would be important to provide our families a prediction of what that would look like. You know, what is an un-weighted GPA, and how it would look for them, and how they might be compared when they are applying to colleges. What we did want to point out is despite there being a large number, a large variety of different approaches, there are, in fact, 10 other Derg schools that are using the same scale weights that we are proposing. A 5.0 scale for the AP courses, and a 4.0 scale for College Prep. We think that's significant, because number one, it shows that this is not a proposal that is, you know, a radical approach, or something that is completely out of practice. With 10 other Derg schools, we think, Derg A and B schools, we think that that is actually good for consistency. But it also is something important to point out. Under our current system, where if you just took the AP courses, for instance, if a college, say Duke University was comparing a student from Fairfield and a student from Greenwich or Monroe, and they were just looking at AP courses, our student, in all of their, if they averaged straight A's in all their AP courses, their GPA would be a 4.67. In those schools, the GPA would be a 5.0. So we are, in some ways, our students could be at a competitive disadvantage because of our current weighting scale, whereas this one would bring us more in line with a lot of other schools.
So, these are our proposed revisions to the GPA scale. We'll go from 4 weights now to 3, AP, Honors, and College Prep. We will convert all Level 0 core electives, those are the ones that are currently at Level 0 in our core areas, English, Social Studies, Math, Science, and World Language, to the Honors level. And we'll convert all the Level 0 non-core electives to College Prep. We'll increase the weight for the Honors and AP courses, as we indicated in the proposed scale, and we will provide both a weighted and un-weighted GPA score on college transcripts and to students and families. We think this is important, the last one, letter E, so that students right from the get-go have an understanding of where their GPA stands, both in the weighted scale and the un-weighted scale. And that will be reported, as we say, to both them and colleges on their transcript. Our proposed timeline, we feel it's important to roll this out. It's hard to change the course midstream for students and families. Some students and families are very aware of what their high school program looks like right from day 1, freshman year, 9th grade, and have planned it all the way through. Some are planning at the end of sophomore year or junior year about elective areas that they want to take. So, we want to roll this out that's fair to all students and families. So, in 2019 school year, next year, we'll apply all the new course names. We believe this will help a great deal with the transparency that will start to appear on college transcripts. We will apply the new GPA scale to the core area 9th grade courses, freshman courses only. So, the new scale will only impact those four classes you see there in red. English 9H, Global Studies H, Biology H, and Geometry H. So, those are the only courses that will be impacted for next year. All other courses, including our World Language and elective courses, would not be impacted. For the 2021 school year, we'll apply the new GPA scale to all courses. This will give our current juniors, for example, time to finish out their high school career, and it will give our 9th and, current 9th and 10th graders time to plan appropriately for the courses that they want to take.
To spell that out a little more specifically, this is a chart that shows how each class will be affected. So, in the top line, as Mr. Ebling said, the class of 2020, our current juniors, next year, since none of their, none of their courses would change in terms of the GPA weighting, it would have zero impact on them. The current class of sophomores would have zero impact for next year as well, but then in their graduation year, there would be some GPA changes. However, this, you know, the three lines in that box spells out what that means. For their College Prep courses, there is no impact. For their non-core electives, there would be a decrease from what is now Level 0 to the College Prep scale. However, for all honors courses, all core electives, and all AP courses, there would be an increase in the GPA weighting for those courses, from what is now currently Level 1 in AP to the new proposed scale for Honors and AP. For the freshmen, as you can see, the only impact on them would be, and this is, again, the current freshman moving into sophomore year, there may be some students who are currently in our Algebra 1 course, as we call it now Algebra 12, and they would move into the Geometry Honors class, so they would get a small bump in their GPA, since we're applying the new scale to Geometry. But for the vast majority of the freshmen, there would be no other impact. And then, as you can see, the changes, which are exactly the same as the ones listed above in the sophomore year, College Prep courses would be no impact, non-core electives would have a decrease, but all honors, core electives, and AP courses would have an increase in their GPA weighting for both their junior year and their senior year. Now, one thing that we want to share with you, which we thought would be really important information, some might ask, for the current class of sophomores, for instance, why would we want to change the GPA for their senior year? Why not let them ride it out? It's only one more year. You know, why would we do that? Well, it comes down to, basically, that with the proposed bump for these courses, like AP and core electives in particular, it could have a significantly positive impact on those students. And let me, let me share with you how that plays out. So we took 100 current senior schedules, and we just literally selected them at random. And of the total, and this is just based on courses they're taking today in our, in our second term, there were 587 courses that those 100 seniors were taking. This does not include PE, Health, or Support Services, or that number would be much higher. But of those courses, and we didn't include those courses because they don't currently impact the GPA anyway. So of those courses, as you can see, 189 of them are Advanced Placement, or 32% of the courses taken by those 100 seniors are Advanced Placement courses, another 5% are honors, and another 41% are the elective core area classes. So those three categories, Advanced Placement, Honors, and Elective Core, those are ones that will be, that will have an increase in their GPA weighting. College Prep courses represents only 5%, and the non-core electives represent 17% of the courses taken, and that is where there is a decrease in the GPA. So totaling those three areas together, 78% of all courses that seniors currently take will have an increase in the GPA for the current sophomores when they are seniors, if those trends stay true. And 17% would have a decrease. And just as a reminder, under Level 0, that is only for Grades A+ through C. That percentage of students who would benefit from the honors weighting would actually, you know, it doesn't apply to students who are getting less than a C-.
So, we went back to our guiding principles that we indicated before to determine, did we accomplish our goals in this proposal that we're bringing forward this evening? And we believe we have. The transparency and clarity on the transcript for Fairfield Public Schools graduate, a lot of that has to do with the name of the course, but also the weighting and the level. Created course names that clearly indicate the sequence of courses, as well as the rigor level. Some of the course name changes that we did not go into is, in our elective areas, over time, those inaccuracies or inconsistencies, we were, one of our courses in the Art Department, for example, was called Intro to Studio Art, and it was about the third year of course that a student would take in art. They already had to have taken Foundations in Art, they already had to have taken Drawing and Painting before they could even take Intro to Studio Art. So we were trying to remove some of those intro-level names. We taught Advanced Advertising in the Business Department currently, but we don't have an advertising course. We go straight to Advanced Advertising. So a lot of this, we hope, will be clear on the transcript. We removed the previous number system in course names that caused that confusion, and we established more consistency to naming courses across departments. So, we talked with departments as well in terms of eliminating some of those terms that they were using to try to accurately describe their, their courses.
So, some of our other guiding principles as we started this process was seeing all of the problems or inaccuracies that the Level 0 GPA weighting was creating, we thought that it was important for us to no longer have it. We didn't think it was serving its purpose anymore, especially with two different weighting scales applied to it. And in doing so, we would have to reassign the courses that were previously Level 0 to the weighting scales that more accurately reflect their rigor levels. And while we are, you know, starting with the theory of non-core electives being College Prep and core electives being honors, since none of those changes are taking place next year, it does give us some time to look more deeply into those assignments, work with our departments, and also to consider, you know, what would be appropriate criteria for assigning a class honors weight. We also, knowing that there could be some decreasing of GPA levels for those Level 0 classes, we wanted to minimize the impact overall of that course reassignment. That is actually where the bump in the honors and the AP courses came from, was in a way to compensate for some of the decreases. And, and we feel that through the research that we did, that it, the, what we're proposing actually almost came to a zero impact in terms of what students currently get for GPA compared to what they were getting before, when you look at the wide range of students and how they perform across the entire year. The other thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to move on the changing of the names as soon as possible, in order to immediately gain the positive impact of transparency on our transcripts, but knowing, as Mr. Ebling said earlier, we wanted to give our families time to adjust in terms of the courses that they, they may want to select, we wanted to roll the GPA changes out a little bit more deliberately. So, that is the presentation. I think what I'll do is I'll just go back to the, you know, again, the purpose of us being here tonight was to ask you to approve this scale as per the Board of Education policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing there are no questions, we'll dismiss our, sorry.
Mrs. Gerber.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I have kind of two different prongs of questions or concerns. I think the first is just that in the past, when there have been changes done at the high school level, like with the block schedule, with the cumulative grading, you know, there was really great communication, and there were meetings with parents, and I just feel that with this, and my sense is that this is, you know, going to be impactful to students, both in terms of their GPAs and also the courses they choose to take, and I'm just concerned that if they're kind of finding out about it at the 11th hour, and I understand that the changes aren't going to be going in, but the fact of the matter is, you know, if and when this is approved, that's what's going to happen. It won't happen for a year, but I guess I just, I'm just concerned that I think a lot of people aren't really aware of what's happening, including the Board, to be quite honest with you. And I guess that's one question I had, I guess, to the chair, to Dr. Jones. I know that it was mentioned, Mr. Cummings said, that after we approved the policy, the graduation requirements policy, that's when you started your work. And I guess my question is that throughout the entire course, and we talked about the graduation policy for quite some time, I don't recall there ever being this topic coming up. So I guess I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, because it seems like part of the reason why it's so compressed is because we approved the policy in October, and I think perhaps if we'd known that this was going to be tied into that, it might have helped kind of facilitate our discussions earlier on. So I'm just kind of curious if there, what the connection was and how that worked out.
Yeah, and to be honest, they could probably speak to that better than I, because they have put in an enormous amount of time since that policy was passed, and we did not know what the Board was going to pass and what we were going to be doing. And it really, I think, started exactly like what they said at the beginning of this presentation, talking about the course names, what we knew we had to do. And quite frankly, the numbering, I think I said that the first year I was here, I was like, "What in the world is this?", because the numbers were strange. So I'm not surprised that came up at all. And I think it was an outgrowth of, "If we're going to do it, let's do it right", with their, but you guys can speak to that, because you're, you were in all those meetings.
I think Dr. Jones portrays it, it really was the change when we started to look at the course names and then what we were going to do with the Level 0. So I agree with you. It is- It is without a lot of notice. We recognize that. We tried to get some communication out to parents this week about it. We feel it's the right thing to do for kids, and we also feel that it's not, that it's benefiting our students, really, is what, is what we're looking at. Where some of the other changes we might have looked at in the past, there were pros and cons to all of them, and there may be some to this as well, but we felt that really what we're looking at and trying to do here was enhance our clarity and transparency in the transcripts and in the GPA as well.
And I would just add, I'm sorry, Mrs. Gerber. You know, we did start with a exploratory committee with teachers last year, talking about course names and how that might impact, but at the same time, we were concurrently working on the graduation requirements, and that, that really took precedence, at least, you know, at the administrative level, to make sure that we had a really good handle on those. As we resumed that work, following the board's vote, this is, I would equate it to a typical house project, maybe a building project for, for Fairfield Lido High School, where, you know, you start poking around at one thing, and then it reveals something else that you really have to tackle, and then it reveals something else that, you know, oh, wow, now, now we have to replace the roof, too. You know, there's, there was that kind of, of problem. We were also working a little bit under, you know, a self-imposed constraint on our end, you know, that we normally start our course selection process for our students at the end of January for our current students, and at the beginning of February for our eighth grade students. And in fact, we start getting that information out to them in the next couple of weeks. So, we were hopeful that we would have all of this out to you and to the public much earlier than that process would begin. But what we also knew is that we came to you unprepared and not having done our proper research, you know, getting the information back from the colleges, because we felt that was really important information for you, also the comparative analysis with the other schools and the DURGs, you know, that took some time as well. So, so we wanted to make sure that we came back to you leaving no stone unturned and having done our research. That, that contributed to the delay as well, and we do apologize.
Right, no, and I, I do appreciate that, but I think part of my confusion, and this, this is more, you know, a board superintendent, you know, kind of question issue, is that we did have topics that we were going to be discussing, and this was not one of them. So, I think that's why I was just a little taken aback when this was on the agenda, because that, that was just, so, and then I, I did have a couple of other questions that, I, I know you said at one point, you know, the majority of the, the schools who you spoke to, they recalculate the GPAs anyway. So, I, I guess my question is, if they're going to be recalculating them anyway, do we have to make such a huge overhaul? And first, let me say that I completely understand the course description, and, and I, I get that part of it, but I'm just not as sure that such a major overhaul is as helpful, and I have a couple of other reasons as to why. But I guess if, if so many schools are doing it, and colleges are doing it anyway, are we going to go through all of this and then they're still going to be recalculating our grade point average? So, I guess that's one thing. Another thing that I'm concerned about, or I wonder if you've looked into, and I'm sure you have, but it's just how will this possibly impact honors and AP enrollment? Because, and I completely understand what you said about, you know, that you're not trying to incentivize, but I, I think there will be some, that this will incentivize some students who will want to take more honors and AP because they want to get a higher grade point average. And so, I would just be concerned that, you know, we may see a shift, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, or if it'll be difficult in terms of scheduling, so I just didn't know if that was something that you would consider. And then another thing, too, that, you know, having been a high school parent and gone to the course selection nights and, and other, you know, nights when we were talking about choosing courses each year, there is a lot of discussion about encouragement for students to not overload on APs and honors. And I am just concerned that if we are making these higher, it's going to be like this carrot that's out there. It's a very appealing thing. Who wouldn't want to have a 5.33, you know, as an A+ in an AP class? So, you know, how much could that help boost up, you know, your grade point average? So, I would just be concerned that, you know, on the one hand, while we're saying, you know, we want you to try to, you know, take some electives that are kind of outside of your wheelhouse and things that you, you know, might want to just do a little differently, there may be less of a tendency for students to want to do that with that glittering 5.0, 5.33 there for an AP class. And I'm just concerned that that could increase student stress. We talk so much about, you know, not wanting to take lots of APs and the stress of getting into college, social and emotional needs of students, and I'm just worried that if we are starting to make it more lopsided AP and honors, that that could create, you know, more problems for student stress over time. And I'm going to just make sure, I just want to make sure I got everything. Oh, and, and also, thank you so much. I think the, doing the weighted and the non-weighted grade point average, that's really great and helpful, and thank you so much for doing that, because I think that'll be really excellent moving forward for students. And I think that's it. Thanks.
One of the things we found with the weighted and unweighted is we had some graduates come back and talk to us about their first GPA from college at the holiday break, and they said, "My GPA is so low. It's only a 3.67, and I have straight B pluses." So, it really is about the, the fact that they see that change when they come back from, from college, that they use a 4.0 scale. To address a little bit of your first question, you know, we can't, colleges will do what they continue to do. So, they'll continue to take our scale and change it and put it into their own formula for students, whether we have a 5.0, a 4.0, or a 3.0. They're, they're going to put it into whatever formula. I saw a high school transcript today that used absolutely no letter grades at all, didn't use the conventional numbers of what we think is 95 or 97, but graded students 1 through 4. In core classes, in AP classes, they got a 3.2. So, you know, they'll, they'll use whatever formula they want, to be fair to all students throughout schools.
And I guess to answer your question about why recalculate that, or why, why should we, why should we change it if they're going to recalculate? Well, there, there are schools also that do take it at face value. So, you know, we don't want to, you know, negatively impact our students, because if there are schools that do do that, you know, we want to make sure that those students who have, you know, competitive advantage as well. In all honesty, the bump is a result of, you know, if we, since we knew that, that one of the driving factors was the Level Zero, and, you know, I'll use the example again of, of a baking and pastry class being weighted higher than college prep chemistry or US history, to rectify that situation, it would mean decreasing the GPA level of those, those elective areas. And we could never, we thought that we could never come here to the board to present to you a new, new proposed scale that would, across the board, decrease almost all students' GPAs. So, the bump was initially looked at as a way to, to compensate for that, so that in the end, the net change between what students generally get now and what they get in this new system is virtually zero, or positive, in, in, in most cases, in fact, would be a positive change. So, so that's really why we would, we do recommend, you know, this overhaul. And in all honesty, if you just look at the numbers that are assigned, the honors weight goes from a 4.33 to a five, a 5.5, I'm sorry, a 4.5. So, that's only an increase of a .17, and then it's a .33 increase at the, at the AP level. When you're talking about a small number of courses that students take, if you look at, you know, one elective per student was what that chart basically showed, that one course and its impact on their overall GPA, even though that's the category that would decrease, what we find is sometimes just, you know, that one course does not have a huge impact overall in GPA, but what we know is that the core classes do, because students take many of those over the course of time.
I, I would only add that I think the, the concerns that you raise are very fair, and what we're proposing exists, it doesn't exist clearly in a vacuum. The graduation requirements that the board has passed include a greater, kind of drive a greater variety of courses, particularly that STEM requirement that's now in there. But I think the other thing that we're working on and will continue to work on is building, improving and building new elective courses that are going to be attractive to students on their, on their merits. And so, there's a continual education process with both students and parents about finding the right balance, not only in the rigor of the courses you take every year, but also in choosing courses which are attractive to you for other reasons than, than the GPA. All of us as high school headmasters or principals have had the experience of students who will take the courses that will drive their GPA up. They're, they're fortunately a relatively small minority of students. What we're working with is the great majority of students who are looking to have a vital high school experience.
I do want to address your question, though, about are we, are we incentivizing students too much, especially for those AP courses? Luckily, Mr. Ebling and I have been around a long time to, to have some historical perspective. And those of you that have been following our education system for a long time, maybe remember that 10, 10 years ago, in order to take an AP course, students had to apply. They had to write a letter of request of why they thought they could be in it, and they needed a teacher recommendation in order to be able to enter those AP courses. We stripped away all of those requirements. We basically opened up our enrollment in AP, and what we found was that students did okay. They, they were able to meet those challenges. There was an adjustment period, and there may be as well with this. And so, I think that's something we'd have to be cognizant of, and our AP teachers and our honors teachers would have to understand that there might have been some, some students who, who have stretched themselves too far, and, you know, as a district, we'll have to be mindful of that and support them. You know, take a look at our practices now to make sure that if we need to compensate for that, we will. But they, that will settle out, and I think every change that we do make, that ultimately in the long run is better for students, there is always adjustments that tend to find equilibrium, you know, over a short course of time. But in, in our, in our estimation, we don't think that this will have a negative impact, if at all, for, for very long.
Dr. Jones, do you have any?
Yeah.
Ms. Mastin Canelli?
A few questions. Only, I won't fire them all out, y'all wait for the answers in between, because we'll hopefully want to have more. First, I, I do feel the need to say that I would vociferously object to it being characterized that a board graduation requirements vote in October had any impact on this, because we were told at this table in June, and the policy committee was told most definitely that our delay should have no impact on the work of the district. We were focused on community service and the mastery credit, and that's it. So, anything involving GPA, because I'm, I'm very sensitive to, to the point that Mrs. Gerber said, because we did, I mean, I wasn't a fan of the rollout of the cumulative grading, but I certainly appreciated the level of communication that was given to us, the listening that was done, the meeting held that was, I thought, rather well-attended by parents, block schedule, same thing. I mean, that, those were, whether parents realized it or not, this is relatively significant. And so, without that communication piece in, it does feel a little bit rushed, and I'm not saying that there isn't a lot of great material here. I mean, I don't think anyone here is questioning the naming. That really is kind of odd when you think of it, to Dr. Jones's point, that it was struck her very quickly upon arriving of, you know, the English 11. But I just would caution anybody with the idea of, of saying it's because of our October vote, because I will speak strenuously against that, that we were told that that should have no impact on the work of the district. So, I'd just like to put that out there. In terms of my questions, I, I agree with Mrs. Gerber. I, I can't help but see this incentivizing. You definitely have more experience with students. I can't help but think that this will impact how some students will consider pushing themselves at a certain level or not. I know, having a child that opted for a math at the Level Zero, the appeal that this was a course where they felt that there was rig, and, and I think all of our courses have appropriate rigor, but knowing that we have the three levels and that essentially gave a fourth level, knowing what the stress would have been, because this child, who shall remain nameless, would absolutely have then pushed herself to do the honors, and the Level Zero was spot on where she belonged, I just, I, with all of the budget and the discussion that we're devoting to the idea of the, the social, emotional learning component, I, I know you don't have an answer to that, that's really just a comment. I just don't see how that, this is not going to impact that. One specific course I was wondering about, where are we with physics at this point? Was the, was the physics course besides AP, was that a Level Zero?
We had Physics 41 and Physics 40, and also the AP Physics course. And the College Board made a change to the AP exam. They now offer AP Physics 1 and AP Physics 2.
Isn't there a 3 also?
No, there's not. But in our analysis, what we found was that the AP Physics 1, that what was required for that exam matched identically with what we had previously called honors physics. So, we just changed honors physics to the AP Physics 1, and what, what it did is it gave the students the bump in the, in the GPA level. And just like we were talking about, the first year, there was a large number of students who opted for that course. I think we had six or seven sections, and then now we're, we have three or four. So, you know, it-
It's a healthy terror of that course?
It was. Well, you know what they realized was that, I mean, it was, they were inappropriately placed, or, you know, placed themselves, because, you know, we, we asked them to make their, their, their choices. And then that, the word got around pretty quickly about what that, what that rigor meant. So, currently, we have Physics 40, AP Physics 1, AP Physics 2.
So, that 40 will then become honors physics?
It will be an honors physics class.
Right, because it's core will be, right. The core will become honors.
It's a core elective, so it would be honors. And again, we have time to make that decision in, in consultation with the physics teachers and the, and, you know, and, and department and curriculum leaders. We can, we can, we can, you know, make that, make that decision.
Okay, so, another question I had with regard to, you talk about districts, I'll go with 1, 2, 3, 4. Was there ever any discussion of calling colleges on their statement that, oh, we do this holistically, which as parents, you're just desperate to know what that opaque, you know, cloud of mystery behind this whole process is? Was there ever any thought to doing no GPA? Here's our transcript. Here are the courses the students took. Here are the grades they got. This is what, I mean, that's what they say they're looking at. Oh, we're looking at everything. Well, then, why not just give them no GPA?
We did not discuss that.
Okay.
The thought did cross some of our minds, though, I will say. Because you're right, and to be honest with you, you know, I have a, you know, I have two students in middle school in another district, and to my chagrin, there is a GPA listed on our middle school report card. And I'll be honest with you, my sixth grader, who's only in middle school for, you know, four months now, is worried about how a test is impacting his GPA. I, I would, you know, I think that our students are overly obsessed with it, and it's a system that's been created from our college level to our society, to you name it. That might be something that we can come to you in the near future. We just didn't think, we talk about big changes, that would be a pretty radical change for us to come to you with, but thank you for the, thank you for the, the incentive.
Thank you.
I just, I, I would be very intrigued. Now, that said, I'd immediately want another survey out to the colleges, but I just-
I wanted to follow up on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
My understanding was that in Connecticut, some of the school districts are moving towards a skills-based report card in high school, mastery-based skills assessment. Some other states already do it, and colleges accept it. I actually thought that's where we were moving towards, rather than changing to where other districts are on our GPA scales.
That is correct. There are some schools, there's been a couple of consortiums in the state of high schools that have been doing that work for a number of years. Fairfield is not part of that. I can tell you, as somebody who was looking at that work while I was employed in another district, the level of work that's required to get to that is, going to a true mastery is a very noble thing and a right thing to do eventually, but it would, takes an awful lot of work to get there. And it's a big change for, for not only the teachers, but also for the parents.
Follow-up on her? Well-
If it's a follow-up, go ahead.
It's a follow-up. It's, if it's, if it's not a follow-up, then she has, has the floor.
Okay. You, you referenced the other DURG A and B schools, which have the, the 5.0 and the 4.0, and you said that, that our students could be at a disadvantage. Have we heard that from any colleges, or is that sort of common sense? I was wondering if that was, if that was a result of any input from admissions counselors visiting our schools and informally letting our, you know, our college resource people know that, that, oh, yes, it has been an advantage at other schools with this 5.0 scale, or is that just sort of, we, we assume that, since 38% are saying it's at face value, that it, it's a very real factor?
It's a little bit of an assumption on our part, but at the same time, you know, we've had panels of college admissions officers come, you know, at both schools, and we actually do this jointly for all of our parents. And one of the things that, that parents all walk away from that usually is, is, you know, not so much increase in frustration, but they hear the message that there is, there really is no rhyme or reason as you go from college to college to college. So, just the understanding of that becomes a big part of it. What they do, what they have shared is examples of how they do make comparisons between students of a common area, you know, whether it be Fairfield County, or whether it be Connecticut, depending on what part of the country that school is in, that they, that they do, there are metrics that are used to make comparisons as they're, you know, trying to sort their piles.
Okay. For the, I know you referenced- For the, I know you referenced that geometry, that that would be, that would be the one situation where our current freshmen, in their sophomore year, if they have that bump to geometry honors, will therefore be slightly impacted. But there's also a number, I mean, what about, wouldn't biology honors be the same situation? What about the world language? Wouldn't that also be, that was one thing that wasn't referenced. I'm not quite sure, because all the world language in, if they're in the, I guess, the 10 or the 20, those were the zero level. So-
So technically, the students who are getting A through C+ are already getting honors credit.
Right.
So as we move those to honors level in the following year, you know, technically there would be no change. But because we do have students who might start a language in the middle of high school, you know, part of our problem, as I mentioned in some of the answers to questions that Mr. Ebling and I had worked on, was that when we have classes that will have students at multiple grade levels in it, it would be very difficult and maybe even unfair for us to say that, you know, if you have a group of freshmen and a group of juniors in the same class, should they be getting different GPA weights? So that was part of the reason why we kept it so limited to courses that we know are primarily freshmen. Biology will not be an issue because all freshmen are in biology this year. So as they move up to their sophomore year, they'll be in, most likely, in chemistry or science electives, whatever, whatever the courses, yeah.
Yeah. But what about even then, if someone's coming, I mean, the freshmen will be coming in at, again, I'm going to refer to the old numbers, French 31. Well, theoretically, you could have a junior in that. So it wouldn't just even be our current freshmen that might get an impact for next year, even some current sophomores. Isn't that possible as well?
It is, which is why we're not counting world language next year. And because it's already honors.
Core classes.
Okay. Just a couple other questions, two more. Is there, was there any discussion, because I can easily see some of the elective teachers fighting for this, aren't there some electives that would be worthy of an honors designation? And I would especially consider across departments, and again, using the old numbers, Fashion 40, the Auto Mechanics 40, I don't remember the name of the course, those courses which involved a four-year commitment, that maybe that 40 level warrants an honors designation?
So I think this is something that we'll be looking at later this spring and even next year, is across departments, as you say, those kind of culminating courses at the end of a sequence, whether they should be in the honors category or not. So I think we will be talking with departments about the rigor in the course and what they're working on, certainly. I think you can make a case for some of those, things like CAD 40 or 50.
Right.
Even some of our music courses, et cetera. So I think we can definitely be looking at that. And we have time.
I just want to add, one of our thoughts is that working with our curriculum liaisons and our program directors to establish some criteria for what an honors course would entail. So that is, not only existing courses, but as courses are added, it would give some aspiration to that.
Okay, and then my last question, because of course, I'm still looking to get some, and I haven't asked Dr. Jones, I don't know what form this would look at, but some kind of feedback this spring, right pushing you to the last June meeting of feedback on how this cumulative grading has rolled out, what's been the feedback in January? And, well, okay, the feedback in January, I don't think is going to be considered the most genuine, woo-hoo, we have no exams. I mean, that's, I would assume would be the sent, the overwhelming reaction.
That counts for feedback, though.
But when they get to facing an exam that's worth 20% of their average in June, you know, that's when the rubber meets the road. So we, I mean, we're talking about, I consider this to be a relatively significant change. That's been a relatively significant change. That also makes me a little bit nervous, just in terms of being able to properly evaluate something. I don't think one year's worth of data is, you know, it's going to be a very important bit of information, both for you and for us. And then next year will be, okay, how did teachers adjust exams, et cetera? And yet now we're going to have a whole nother wrinkle thrown in there for students, possibly in terms of their selection. So that's just, I raise that more as a concern. I'm not sure what you could say about that.
As headmasters, we're very proud to keep Fairfield on the cutting edge. But we are also looking forward to that feedback as well, from our teachers and students.
Thank you.
Ms. Lieber?
I'm very excited about the idea of no GPAs. If we did with the graduation requirement, try to incentivize students to really take the courses that they want to take because they're motivated by that subject matter, then I think all of the grade weighting, whichever way we slice it, is skewing that effort. And if colleges are going to be doing whatever mystery calculation they're going to do, which we all know is what they do, then why not provide that freedom to our students and allow them to actually pursue what they're interested in? And there will always be kids who are motivated to take AP or honors because they think that's what the colleges they have their eye on are looking for, and that will be reflected in their transcript. But there will be a lot of other students that would like to maybe try some other things and not feel like they will be negatively impacted because this course is not weighted or not weighted the same as this other type of course. And I think providing our students with that type of flexibility is a really radical and exciting idea. And I was gonna, I had written down radical because I thought we should do no grade weighting, but I actually like the no GPA even better. So I'm just going to put a vote out, I mean, not a real vote, a voice out in support of that idea, because I think it's congruent with what all the work our policy committee did with you guys, and we voted for, for the graduation requirements. So that's not really a question, but-
I understand.
And I'm sorry, that's probably a really infuriating thing to say after you put in so much work-
It's not at all.
For this proposal.
One of the things I do want you to be aware of, that is not how we approached this proposal, so we didn't do the homework to be able to answer that question as to what colleges would think about not having a GPA at all, or what other DURG schools are doing, or what other schools across the country are doing with that. To speak to courses that are taken, and one of the advantages of having such a great support team here is, you know, they're able to slip us the answers to questions. But one of the things that we want to recognize is, the role of our school counselors is to help students to make the best possible choices. And to talk to them about something like continuing a sequence of courses in a particular department till you get to that culminating experience, or picking something that you really have a passion. We have core courses and core requirements for a reason. We also have opportunities for all students to take electives for a reason. And part of that high school experience is about finding those things. And I think that's what colleges are, you know, saying they're looking at as well beyond just a grade point average or an SAT score.
And I just want to add, it is not infuriating at all. It is, in fact, you know, actually really refreshing, because, you know, in working in Fairfield for as long as we have collectively, you know, sometimes a lot of the decisions we make are based on our experience in working with our parents and our students. And, you know, that type, that type of idea, you know, what, you know, my concern would be, you know, what would be their impression of that? You know, which of course, now just hearing it from two board members, you know, gives us, you know, the beginnings of doing some research and looking into that. But knowing this tight timeline that we had, knowing that we needed to make these changes both for the course names and the level zero, because, you know, they are so blatantly, you know, inappropriate in some ways, we wanted to present to you, you know, basically a GPA weighting scale that compensated for those changes and also impacted students in a positive way, as much as we can do within the confines of our current system. But, you know, it's not at all, it, like I said, it's very refreshing. Thank you.
And if I think about it, I hadn't realized, I don't think my high school did, reported GPAs, and I think the only time GPAs came into play was to calculate valedictorian and soliditorian. Just, it's a thing. It has to be in some places. And it could be exciting for Fairfield to be a leader in this.
I have two things. The first is, I'm guessing the rush right now is because you have to make course selections for the fall.
Part of it is our program of studies, that's correct.
And so part of that, in collapsing into three sections, will be helping the teachers, where they decide where to place students in their course selections next year, where do they accurately place these students? Do they put them into a college prep, or do they put them into an honors? I just had this last year, so I can tell you, a lot of differentiation goes into teaching students who were leveled in a whole nother class. So I get a little nervous that maybe we need to give some PD to our teachers, teaching at a college prep level, who now are going to have a room or an honors level, with students who all have to meet the same skill sets, how they get there.
Right. So I think one of the things, remember, the change is not happening in all of our courses for next year, and it's also not happening in our non-core elective areas. But one of the things that we find from our discussion with our elective teachers, they really value that heterogeneity that they have in those courses. They wanted to keep their level zero in this proposal at that college prep because they wanted all types of students in those courses. So they wanted students who might be in an AP math class, but really wanted to take a culinary class, or really wanted to take an auto mechanics class, as well as other students who may struggle in those core area classes. So I think that's one of the things that they really appreciate, having that heterogeneity across courses that they see in the elective areas. So we're not seeing a huge shift from those courses moving into that level, because I think the rigor and what they're teaching now is right around that part. You might see it in some of our core area electives that are moving to the honors weight. But I think our teachers now will be recognizing that they're not going to be changing as much of the rigor level necessarily as where the GPA weight lands and where the elimination of those numbers did.
And part of that, too, is that there are a very few number of courses that currently exist at both level one and level zero at the same time. Most of our level zero courses are standalone, and that's the only level that exists, thus being unlevelled. So in fact, you know, as we go through the process of deciding which would be honors or which would be college prep, it's not a matter of having to differentiate between two different classes, but just understanding what's the rigor level of that current one course that exists and weighting it appropriately.
So the second thing, do you have a plan in your schools to address educating the parents and the students about these changes, and how will it affect them? Because I'm sure as all better members will say, we've been bombarded by people asking questions, and I don't necessarily know that I could have answered them in the last four days for them.
Yes, we certainly will be meeting. We meet with all of our students on their course selection. The counselors meet individually with students on their course selections as well. We have PTA meetings coming up that will, this will be part of that rollout with them to make them have an understanding of what we're proposing. Not that the board will have made a decision by then, but certainly we'll do as much communication as we can with them as well.
We have our course selection night as well, in which, you know, as we talk about, you know, this, what they'll be picking for next year will be, you know, if this were to be an approved change, we would also, you know, explain the rollout and its impact as well there. So lots of chances for parents to ask questions, as well as, you know, we're always open to holding a forum, as we did for cumulative grading as well.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you for your presentation and to Dr. Jones and to everyone who has answered many, many questions for me in the last couple of days. I appreciate the quick response, and I have another page. The, and I'll just try to go through them as they're probably not in any random order, but I believe I got an answer to one question. One of my original thoughts was, why didn't we just deal with the zero-level electives and not change the scale at all, and just deal with what you had to deal with in terms of those elective classes? And I believe I heard in the answer in your presentation was that because it would have definitely negatively impacted all of our students in terms of their GPA. Am I correct in that, hearing what I heard?
Yes, in the original proposal that we sent, you know, there are several tables that include GPA weightings. And one of them is, you know, just making the adjustments to level zero and no, and without changing, and using the current GPA scale. And what you can see is that more students were impacted negatively in that regard. And, you know, to kind of break that down really quickly, students who tend to not take as many AP courses or honors courses, students who take primarily level-two courses, tend also to take a lot of electives. So therefore, if they are taking electives that are non-core areas, and those are all decreasing in their GPA, it disproportionately hurt the students who tended to not take those AP and honors-level courses. However, they all eventually take some leveled courses throughout their four years in high school. A couple honors here, a couple core electives there, which will be weighted as honors now. So the compensation that occurred, you know, in the bump of the GPA for especially the honors level, and in some cases AP, like some of them are taking AP art, for instance. So therefore, that compensation helped those students so that they were not negatively impacted.
Thank you. My next question was, I know you put a lot of time in the committee, was in how the committee came to decide that when you were going to be looking at the amount of increase that you gave to the two categories, can you just explain for us and the public how you came to give AP .33, honors .16, and college prep nothing?
So we wanted to keep college prep at a 4.0, because a college prep was, it's the expected grade level performance, you might say. When we talk about the rigor level of college prep, you know, another synonym for that would be grade level. And so because 4.0 is sort of the standard scale that's used across the board, we would consider that the same as the unweighted scale, if you will. The increment of points, and then in looking at the AP level, again, looking at some of our colleague districts that also use 5.0, we, you know, we start, we basically started with that to say, you know, how would this, you know, how would this play out? And then honors, being the level in between the 4.0 and the 5.0, just logically seemed to be a 4.5. So that's sort of the evolution of the thinking in terms of the increments.
I kind of figured that was the evolution, but I guess for me, when I'm looking at this in black and white on the paper, and it's maybe the elephant for me, and it's that what we're doing to college prep kids is you are taking away those at that elective higher weight, but you're only giving the commensurate bump to AP kids in honors, and you're not giving them any commensurate bump. Do you recognize that, how that looks?
Well, I think I'm going to refer back to this chart here. Those students, in fact, took a large number of elective core classes.
Core classes, which will be the honors.
Right, as you could see, that's, that's in fact, the majority of courses that seniors take. So, you know, well, you know, of the, you know, these, again, 100 randomly chosen seniors currently, that is the largest number. And so therefore, students will in fact get a commensurate bump in their GPA from that, from, you know, just taking those electives alone.
If they take core electives.
Right. Now, at the same time, the non-core electives, as you can see that with 17%, 102 courses out of 100 kids, you know, it's basically one course per student. And I actually have some other statistics there for you. I was able to grab right before the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Of those 100 kids, 27 students took zero non-core electives.
Twenty, okay.
Forty-seven took one. Twenty-two took two, and only four took three. So basically, 75% of our seniors in this, you know, pool are only taking, are either taking zero or one non-core elective. So basically, that's, the negative that could happen is almost, you know, uncalculable, because it's either one course that's affecting them negatively, or-
That's only seniors, right?
Yeah, that's only seniors.
That was the seniors that we looked at.
Right, so over the course of four years, that could be, play out differently.
It could, but they're also taking more honors courses over four years, and more core electives over four years, and so then the compensation would be bumped. You know, when we did those sample GPAs, those are based on four years of courses that students took.
Part of it, too, is that, you know, these are graduation requirements, so they take an elective, it's in a core area, because they have to take four years of English. So they might not take, what we call an elective in English, for example, might be understanding film, or it might be creative writing. That's a core area elective that's going to get the honors bump. Their math electives are going to get the honors bump. Their social studies, so their civics, their psychology or sociology classes, those kinds of things are core area electives. So there's still electives that kids are taking in their, throughout their four years, but they're in that core area. So they might be taking what they call three electives- So they might be taking what they call three electives, but two of them or all three of them might be in the core areas.
Speaking of different subject areas and how we're defining core elective, non-core elective, I think that, I appreciate the fact that in our line of questioning over the last couple of days, we may have recognized that maybe the higher level sequence things may need to be looked at a little bit, so I appreciate that. Which would be non-core elective advanced.
That's right.
Non-core elective advanced, perhaps, would be something that we might look at. The second part of that...
Just call them honors, probably.
Yeah, right, honors. That's what I'm, I'm just looking, I'm looking for my bucket. You know, we have all these buckets now, so...
To keep it simple, in the three, the three categories, we would just say wind ensemble honors.
With the name change, like, I'm thinking the advanced, right? So the one that I'm struggling with a little bit besides the advanced, non-core elective is the arts. So in our graduation requirements and in state statute, the arts are part of humanities core. It is nine credits of humanities, including civics and arts, is how that statute reads, correct? And in our graduation requirements, we kept arts in two areas because we didn't know this was going to happen, right? We didn't know this conversation at the time was going to happen. And we were very mindful of trying to make sure that kids had flexibility and how they were going to tag things with our new grad requirements. So in our grad requirements, arts is also a humanities core area, but it is also vocational slash arts elective. Depending on how, because we didn't want to dictate how kids took that because they might want to take more English and we still wanted them to maybe go outside their wheelhouse, not knowing this was going to happen. So given the fact that the state defines the arts, music, art, theater, dance, as a humanities core, and our graduations anticipate that as a core, we've been told that the arts will not be core and that those are considered just a non-core elective course. But yet, we're counting it as a core elective grad requirement. So I'm wondering if there's been some thought on that of how the arts maybe should be also considered core.
We do have some AP courses in the arts. So we do have, you know, the AP studio art, et cetera. So we may, again, I think that's an area that we might look at for some of those culminating courses where we might consider it to be an honors weight. I don't know that we're prepared to do that right now without talking with the departments around that idea and which ones they think might, might fit that area.
Okay, so possibly those advanced, level three, four, five, whatever, something like that.
And even if they were all college prep level, they would impact all students exactly the same way.
Okay. I did the arts, also...
Yeah.
Again, I am very heavily hung up on how we're categorizing core, non-core. Because I think that when you shake this out, if you're talking about accounting, economics, business law, a lot of our business classes that also have that sequence, I'm not sure I can say that's the same as beginning keyboarding.
So our business courses have very, probably of all the departments, have very little sequencing. They have a few prerequisites after intro to business, maybe, but almost all of them are open to all students' grades 10, 11, and 12. So there's not a sequence that students would take in our business program that would necessarily do that. We do teach in our business program AP economics, so there's an opportunity there. AP computer science, AP computer science principles. So those might be seen as a culminating experience in those areas.
There are some, though, like entrepreneurship, finance and investing. Those are only grade 11, 12. There are a lot of prerequisites to those, so I'm just calling that out as intentioned to.
Well, I think as Mr. Cummings said earlier, as we explore what the criteria would be for an honors course, that...
That was one of my questions, what did you use as criteria?
We would then apply that or ask the departments to apply those criteria to make some choices potentially of those, you know, the potential of honors weighting.
And then the one thing I did want to also talk about was the class of 2023. And that the way the rollout plan, which is not in our purview, but it's just something that came to my mind, was that the class of 2023 is going to get the core bump and maintain the non-core elective. So it's like a double dip for that one class, which no other grade in our district will have. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. First of all, to get the ball, I mean, anytime you have a rollout, there's going to be little quirks about who's going to be impacted and when. And I think what's difficult for us, and actually, one of the benefits of our, of our system is that we have multiple courses where there are students in multiple grade levels in the same course. You know, like, you know, a lot of the electives, in fact, fall into that category. I might be a senior and finally get to take intro to culinary arts. I've been waiting for three years, and I finally have enough room in my schedule to do that. It's also a very popular elective for our freshmen. And what we didn't feel would be fair is for, if we, if we made this change for all electives, say, then the senior who's finally getting it now is going to get a decrease in their GPA. And they didn't anticipate that, and so that wouldn't be fair to them. If we apply it just to the freshmen, then you'll have two freshmen, you have a freshman and a senior sitting in the same class. They both get an A, but the senior gets a 4.3 and the freshman gets a 4.0. So that wouldn't be fair either. So, you know, that, you know, a lot of those things were considered in figuring out the rollout plan. So yes, the freshmen do get the bump. But, you know, part of it was, with all of the new graduation requirements, don't we, shouldn't we give them a little bit of something?
So note to eighth graders, take your non-core electives freshman year. PSA. Okay, so let me see if I have a couple. If somebody else wants to go, I probably have a couple more. Is there anyone else who has any other questions? Because I'll take a break for a second. Okay, thanks.
You have shared the floor. Mr. Dwyer?
Not necessarily a question, but I do want to join my other board members in thanking you for the presentation and for the work, obviously, that the central office, the headmasters, and the staff at the various high schools did in putting this proposal together. I'm thinking we have 3,000 high school students, and each one of them have a chess game that they play of putting a four-year schedule together. And so if I just look at the three of you, you're managing a four-dimensional chess, 3,000 chess games that are four-dimensional. Not an easy task to say, and what's the impact on all of those individuals over the four-year period? So I congratulate you for tackling this, if you will. I have an impression from the presentation and the responses to questions that net-net, there is either very few, or if any, students who are going to have a net negative impact on their GPA spread over a four-year period. That the few courses that are decreased in GPA are going to be offset by those courses that are positively impact and that net-net, this does not have a significant, if any, impact on any individual student's GPA. Am I making the right assumption?
Yes. That's the simple answer, yes.
No, I like simple answers. Thank you.
Mrs. Garber?
Yeah, just one other question I just thought of. With Naviance, how is this going to, how will these changes impact Naviance? I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, when you go on and you see the grade point averages from the year before of who got into what schools and whatnot. How will that be, will that be kind of, will I have to go back and recalculate based on the new scale? Or will there be an asterisk saying on old scale? I'm just curious.
We're going to phone a friend on this one? Our directors of people services is Karen Campbell and Vanessa Montorcy.
Good evening. Vanessa Montorcy, Director of People Services at Fairfield-Adel High School. So I think this is a perfect timing for this question because it relates to exactly the question that was just asked about the impact of the GPA, which is very minimal. So the beauty of that is because the GPA, the impact is so minimal, it's going to have pretty much zero impact on how Naviance and scattergrams will look to, to parents and to students when they're comparing their GPAs to their child's GPA. And to, if you're familiar with scattergrams, you can see what previous students, what their GPA was, what their SAT score was, and did they get in or not. So there would be little to no impact to that. Any other Naviance questions while I'm here?
Sure. Just a Naviance favor. Can we please get that down to the last three or four years and get rid of the earlier stuff? That has nothing to do with our discussion here.
We, we usually have them within the last five years, so there's a nice sampling. Like, I know when you look at UConn, you're probably comparing your child to like 150, probably even more than that, kids. But for us, it's beneficial when you're going to a school that's not heavily attended to have multiple data points, if you will. But we do try to keep it within the five years.
Because I thought it was eight years.
It, it should be five. Usually, we update our data, so it's only five.
Okay, that was my Naviance question.
Yeah, great question.
Mrs. Garber? And this isn't an Naviance question. I just wanted to weigh in and say I completely agree with the idea of getting rid of grade point averages, so count me in.
Thank you.
We're ready to move.
May I ask one follow-up on?
Yep.
I do want to ask one question. This is a follow-up to Mr. Dwyer's question, and I'm not sure to whom to direct it, but the idea that ultimately this would not have impact or would not have very much negative impact. But in the information that we got from Dr. Jones, I think it was the 32-page pack, on pages five and seven, specifically page seven, it talks, it gave a scenario of seven different students. And in five out of the seven scenarios, it's a GPA decrease. Now, what we don't know from this is these seven scenarios, what percentage of the student body do they represent? So the fact that five out of seven go down sounds terrible, but it could be that you really, you know, took a micro view at a small number of students and in fact, the vast majority are those student one or two. But again, in fact, five out of seven are having a GPA decrease.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I appreciate you noticing that. The, the reality is that students one, two, and three, in fact, represent closer to 75 to 80% of our student body. What we were trying to do, and, you know, we had originally brought some of our, you know, these initial thoughts to our counselors and had them, you know, take a look at it and give us feedback. They were most concerned about the students who were struggling for a variety of different reasons, whether it be because they were, you know, receiving special education services or because they just were more in the track of taking more vocational types of courses. So they wanted to see different, the different scenarios for those students. So really, you know, basically, students four, five, six, and seven, you know, represent disproportionately that population of students. And, you know, I do, I do absolutely recognize that. It appears that that would represent, you know, the majority of students, but it's in fact the opposite. Because, you know, you know, when we looked at three or four different versions of student one, you know, it was almost always the same impact, you know? So we just chose one to be the representative, if you will, of, you know, probably that top 15 to 20% of the class. And then the next two students represent the next, you know, probably 40% of the class between them. So that's, it, thank you for bringing that up. And, but that is absolutely the case, that the majority of students really do fall in that, in that, those upper three, those top three, the student one, two, and three.
And I suppose it's also possible that in some mix of these lower scenarios, because of the graduation requirements and because of what's, that's going to be prompting kids to take for those, an increased number of core classes, that's something that we can't calculate into this in terms of GPA impact. We don't act, I mean...
These courses were chosen based on the rules of the game that they knew.
Right. I mean, I'm sure Dr. Rasmussen could have a field day with running all sorts of hypothetical scenarios of 2023, 2024 kids. But, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and just as a highlight, this, the student in particular who, who, whose GPA went down the most, he was a student who, who took a lot of elective courses and did very well in those courses, but did very poorly in most of his core academic courses. He went on to have a very successful placement after high school graduation in a field that, in a school that was fitting for the area that he was concentrating in. So, you know, again, with the counselor's help and whatnot, you know, he's able to have a very successful post-high school career despite the fact that he had some difficulty in his core area courses. But that was why his GPA was impacted the most because he had, he had a lot of those non-core electives drop in the GPA. But, you know, .06 overall is still not a whole lot. And, you know, most of them were in the, you know, the 100th to, you know, two 100ths range that, you know, we felt basically was not the overall negative impact. A couple of grade differences here and there would make those plus .01 and plus .02.
Mrs. Garber?
I just had one question I just thought of about National Honor Society. I know that the cutoff for National Honor Society was changed from 3.7 to 3.9. But now with this new, with the bump, is that something you foresee having to go back and change again?
I think we would probably have to look at that. We'd probably also have to look at things like our awards at the end of the year, the 4.0 honor cords and things of those natures. If we're adjusting this scale, we would have to look at some of those things.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lieber?
Did you guys spend much time thinking about eliminating weighted grades? Or did you, maybe this isn't, maybe you don't want to answer this. Or did you worry about the backlash of that? Because I'm wondering, like, what is the academic benefit of potentially incentivizing students into this area, that area, and having to rework everything if we think most colleges are redoing it anyways? And really, it seems sort of like a hunt for grade inflation. Like, I, I don't mean that to sound negative, but kind of, what, what's the meaning of the higher grade GPA if, if it's now we're applying it to like so many courses instead of APs?
So we will, we will be reporting both a weighted and an unwaisted GPA. We were concerned about bringing this proposal forward. So we didn't look, we honestly, to answer your question, we did not look at going completely unwaisted courses all the way through. It's not very common practice, I'll be honest with you. When you look at other schools, most schools do give a weighted bump to things like AP and honors courses. So it would be, it would be a shift for us, and we'd really have to do some research to see the benefits of that.
I guess I'm, I'm curious about the definition of the honors then because now it's seeming like we're exploring the idea that if you take a number of prereqs, that culminating course is now honors, when really, that's just the culminating course. And you're theoretically in that because that's your area of interest and not to, in the end, get some sort of GPA bump.
And I think that's a very fair concern. That's why the establishment of some, of a set of criteria for what would constitute an honors course would be needed. Just because you take the senior year option should not denote, it's rather cynical approach, actually. So if we look at, and I did a little work on this prior to tonight's meeting, most of this is right now available at the college level, but colleges have a system by which they denote courses that would fall into their honors college, for example. And that is work we will be doing with our curriculum leaders as well as the high school administration.
I swear that if the bump becomes so prolific, then if you're not getting the bump, it's looked like it's a penalty, like you're doing something wrong, which is not how it's supposed to be at all. And I'm worried that it's kind of getting like flipped on its head a little from what we were trying to reestablish with our graduation requirements.
It's really a question of both what's in the curriculum and what's required of the instruction. It's not one or the other, it's really both.
I, I also want to say that I think sometimes there's a danger when, you know, because we're so focused on this particular proposal, because that is, you know, the board's purview to review the GPA scale and vote on that, that we hyper-focus on these types of issues. I can tell you, when I talked to the counselors, one of the, you know, and I, I, you know, being so steeped in all the research on this, you know, that's where I was as well. And the counselors said to me, like, look, when we're sitting down face-to-face with a student... And the counselors said to me, like, "Look, when we're sitting down face-to-face with a student, we're not talking about what the GPA weight of the class is. We're talking about what's the right class for the student." And, you know, occasionally, you might have some students, in all honesty, at the upper levels who are looking to, you know, maybe think about, "Well, if I'm not going to take this AP course, how that's going to impact me." But the vast majority of the students, you know, are not necessarily gaming the system solely based on GPA. They are, they are really looking at it from the perspective of what's best for their, for their future interests. So I just want to caution us about going down that road too far.
I really appreciate that. And actually, my concern is less about students and more about the perception of families with the changes in where their students are enrolled. And I don't want our families to start to think that if that course doesn't have a bump, it's not worthy of their time. And, and maybe that also is a totally unwarranted concern, and I hope it is. But I just thought I would, I would throw it out there.
Well, the college prep courses are not impacted. So they, you're right, they're not getting a bump, but they're also not being impacted negatively. So that is a consistency moving forward, so.
I, I think, just to piggyback on Ms. Leeper's point, I don't think the concern is just the Level O to the honors. I think there's the very real concern of the 4.67 to the 5.0. You know, that, that is a very noteworthy group as well. So it's kind of on both fronts, so.
Okay, just last question.
Okay, yes, sir.
But no, no, it's okay.
I just wanted to clarify in my own mind what you said back between those very few classes that have both a 40 and a 41 in the core. How are you treating those two?
If they are a 41, they would be honors. If they are a 40, if they have both, if they both currently exist concurrently, the 41 would be the honors level, as it is now. And the Level Zero would, would be considered a college prep class. So there, right now, they are already different rigor levels, but they're getting the same weight. So we're just rectifying the situation by, by reassigning the 40 to Level Two.
Because I thought you had just said previously that pre-calculus 40 would be a core honors elective.
So that, we may have made a mistake if, not thinking about the 41 in that particular case.
The pre-calculus 40 will drop down.
The vast majority of Level Zero classes are standalone, and they don't exist in that, you know, in that cohabitation, if you will. So those would be the ones in the core areas that would be moving to honors. That might in fact be the only exception.
And that, yeah, and that's my, because we don't have a calculus, non-honors, right?
We teach Intro to Calc 50.
Which is honors.
Right, we're changing the name to Calculus, and it'll be an honors course.
So that 50 is not following the same path.
There isn't two levels of calculus.
Because it's not 51.
But that's because the students that won't take it at the, that choose not to take it at the honors level, in fact, take different courses with different mathematical concepts. So, you know, there's no, there's really not calculus light, if you will. They take trigonometry and math modeling, which are two different, two different courses. But those are non-honors course options for students moving out of pre-calculus 40.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're coming to, I've been very quiet. I want to thank you for all your work on this. I know you worked on it over the holiday break. I appreciate your due diligence and the time that you spent answering the board's question over the last four days. I have some, just want to talk a little bit more about the current sophomore class and what their transcript, because there, this class has sort of been the guinea pigs for a lot of new initiatives over the last few years. And they're going to be putting forth a GPA that is on two different grading scales. So how is the communication process going to go with college admissions officers? And how you're going to report their final GPA that are going to schools?
Directors, do you want to talk about that?
Ms. Campbell and I wrote a letter this year to explain to the college admissions officers with regards to cumulative grading. We would do the same with regards to how we updated our GPA scale. We would want to do it anyway, because if this proposal goes through and we have a weighted GPA and an unweighted GPA, we would want to explain our updated transcript anyway. So it would call for a letter to the colleges.
So for that year, it would be, you know, the beginning of their high school career, they were graded on this scale, now it's this scale. But the weighted, I mean, I understand the weighted GPA will help. I'm very, very happy, I have, I have, will help for clarity in term, I'm getting like, you know, phoned a friend from the audience, in terms of what colleges do with the information they're getting. I have a senior now, and I will admit that it is challenging what the weighted GPA means. You go on Naviance, and you go on the scattergrams, and you think that maybe the college is the right fit. But GPAs, as we're hearing tonight, are somewhat arbitrary. So you're not necessarily comparing. It looks like that's a target school for you, but depending on what your courses were, it may not be. So I think the weighted, the unweighted GPA, I'm very happy to see that being instituted. I think it'll be very valuable to students and to families to give them a realistic picture of, of what colleges really might be the right fit. Especially after seeing the data that you collected, that they're just throwing out electives, they're unweighting, they're doing their own calculations. So I'm happy that that data is coming from us, that this is what the unweighted GPA will be. Happy about the renaming of the courses. When I first got this information, my initial reaction was, well, just the weighting of the classes, how you identify what's honors, what's not honors, and what the weight will be for those classes. So I'm glad to hear that that work is ongoing, because I think that a lot of, you know, as we've heard, a lot of work still needs to be done on that. And I would hope that you would use the board as a resource and as a partner in some of those discussions, and, you know, get our thoughts earlier in the process, so we're not all sitting here trying to turn this around within two weeks. I do appreciate that you are the educators, and, you know, you put the time in, and we're trying to make these decisions based on the information that you've given us. That said, you know, I don't think this was a rubber, this should not be a rubber-stamp decision of the board. So I thank the board for the due diligence they have done over the last week and the next week, because my intent is to put this on our agenda next Tuesday, meeting for the 15th, which is breaking with our past practice of having any kind of action or business item on our, that meeting for the budget. Usually, that is just Q and A. But I appreciate the time is of the essence and that we at least need to put it out there, what the board decides to do with that. Vote is, you know, the board's purview, but it is coming your way. I will not go on except to say, if you have any more questions, to please throw them to Dr. Jones as soon as possible, so these fine people can have time to answer them and get the answers back to us. So we can make an educated decision on a topic that affects, you know, a lot of our students. And we want to get this right, and I appreciate that you do as well. I'm glad to hear that you're going to be reaching out to parents over the next few weeks. And if you need any more information from the board, I encourage you to please go through Dr. Jones and, you know, put it out to us as well. Any additional comments, questions, concerns?
Two quick things. First, this is a follow-up to what Ms. Vitale just asked you as someone's walking away. You referenced the unweighted GPAs on the scattergrams, but correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that's the case.
I'm sorry, that not, that the weighted GPAs. I think the weighted GPAs, just going on scattergrams, I think that they're weighted GPAs so you look, well, you know, if your kids are applying to school, my GPA is 4.2, a school's looking for, you know, I look like I'm going to get into that school.
Right.
They're not taking it in consideration. That 4.2 is because I took all electives that were weighted with this heavier weight. It's somewhat falsely inflated, I think, and may give some students a false sense of security in terms of what their, their GPA, the colleges are really looking at and judging them by.
Unless they're one of the ones that looks at it as face value.
Unless they're one that looks in face value. But it sounds like the majority aren't. And just going through, as I'm sure, you know, you have high school students, you've been going through this also, and sitting through many presentations from colleges, GPA, not all that important. Yes, a consideration, maybe gets you in the door. We hear rigor. Rigor, of course, work. So maybe I'm the minority, that if this change might be an incentive a little bit to maybe just take that leap, to add a little rigor to a schedule, that could be a benefit to many, many students. I am totally against, I mean, picking a class based on its weight. I hope, I hate to think that that really plays into it. And my concern is more just about, to Ms. Leeper's point, about just the behavior of how we view our classes, how we judge them, how students choose their classes. So it makes me very happy to hear that a lot of these discussions are happening. I think a lot is going to fall on our school counselors to really be sensitive, that, you know, kids are going to be looking at this and looking like, "I'm going to, you know, I'm going to boost my GPA, I'm going to go that extra level, I'm going to chase the GPA." And I think it's going to be up to you guys to really put the brakes on that and encourage them to increase their wheelhouse and not shy away from the elective now that maybe isn't so heavily weighted as it once was. Because I do have some fear about that. Maybe they're not taking the elective now because it's weighted, but if that weight goes away, I'm afraid that some electives may not be as heavily enrolled. And that is, I think, on you to communicate to families, to kind of give some advice to parents, to kind of make sure that doesn't happen. And when we're working with our kids to help them choose their course loads, to kind of not be so concerned about what the ultimate GPA is, and I know that it's hard to do. But it really just kind of comes into communication between parents with children, councils with children, and really just trying to capture the graduation requirements and the portrait of a graduate, and all those things that you've worked so hard for these last two years.
So, one, I'd wanted to ask about your, the comment you made, so thank you for explaining that. And second, and I'm not going to advance any argument right now, but I did want to put the board on notice that I will be making a motion to postpone next Tuesday. I've got a budget book to look through, and I have a lot to look through here with the material we've gotten. I've just seen the questions that were all submitted to the board, which I, thank you for the color coding of that. So that initial question, response, follow-up question, their response, I am not going to be ready to make a vote on this next Tuesday. So without an arg, okay, I just did an argument, sorry. I just wanted to let the board know I will be doing that.
I appreciate the heads up on that, and Jeff has that. All right, um, thank you.
We also want to say thank you to all of you, because obviously, you know, we, we do feel somewhat responsible for the delay in getting this to you in a timely way. It turned into a much bigger thing than I think we even realized. But at the same time, your questions have been articulate and right, spot-on. And, you know, we appreciate the dialogue. And, you know, we are very open to making, you know, taking your suggestions about how we implement the GPA scale, should it be approved. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, approval of the minutes. That the Board of Education approve the special and regular minutes of December 11, 2018? Mrs. Gerber, second by Mrs. Picco. All in favor? It's unanimous, 8-0. Superintendent's report.
I'll keep it short. Um, we will be sending out information for pre-K enrollment now that we know where pre-K is, because we had held off with that this year, especially for the children who are at Burr, because those, the children in that program may want to go to one of our other two school sites next year. So we'll be getting pre-K enrollment out this next week. Also, last night, I attended the PTA C and the council meeting, and Caroline Trubuco, who is the president, did an excellent, excellent job just on the budget in general. She called it Budget Camp, I think is what it was called. And she did, they were recording that, and I think they're pushing it out on Facebook. But I encourage you to watch it, because she really pulled a lot of good information from the CAFER as well, from the town side. At Dwight Elementary, our restrooms are back open, they're working, there's no smell. We think that was just from the first day after they'd been closed down for a month. So it looks like right now the repairs have worked. So we're really excited that right now Dwight's back in good shape. Our scoreboards are in at Ward, and I just don't think I'd reported that before, but all four of them. And then just last of all, I just want to say thank you to the executive team. Most of them are still here, putting this budget book together. The whole, the whole component literally takes months. And I just, there's an entire team of people that really work over most of the winter break. They don't get a winter break in order to do this. So thank you to the executive team, especially to Ms. Muncell, who's back in the back. She is, makes sure that we have all of our numbers correct, and the entire business department do all of the printing as well. It's just, it's an enormous task. Jan Burns works tirelessly to help with the PowerPoint and really makes it fun. Also to Meg Brown, who helped set up tonight. Just to the whole team, we've got a lot of work ahead. We appreciate your questions coming to us as quickly as possible. And just a reminder, it will be on the certain sections, so we'll send you out a reminder which sections with page numbers. Thank you.
Mrs. Vitale? Sorry.
Water went down the wrong pipe, sorry.
Um, just one quick follow-up question, and I know I should know this, but I don't. When we're talking about our pre-K, obviously, the ones that we had had at Stratfield and Burr had a tuition component to them. Do the other ECC ones where we pair, where we're looking at that peer ratio, do those students pay a fee?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah.
If they didn't, I was going to ask if the Finance Committee could take a look at that. Since, since now everything is getting grouped together, it would seem that they should all be on the same scale and everything.
Yeah, it'll be much easier for our, our whole central office this year in terms of pre-K, because we had three different schedules. So some people, they were paying the same tuition. Some people were three days, some people were five days. So this year, it's going to be better for quite a few of the families that actually are going to have a five-day program. There's the typical increase in the budget for tuition, just, you know, cost of living adjustment that's in there, but much more equal this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Jones? Okay, committee and liaison reports?
I just wanted to give a quick report on Mill Hill. The committee meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled because there was no outstanding business. And last week, as you may know, or probably know, they, Mr. Quinn went to the Board of Selectmen just to give an update. The one thing that was notable is that he did, they did have some dates, some tentative dates that they're hoping in terms of being able to bring the proposal forward to the other town bodies. And the dates they gave, they had Board of Finance first on May 9th, then any possible, if anything had to come to the Board of Ed, it would be on the, we'd have a special meeting on the 14th. But that's just a tentative kind of placeholder. And then the Board of Selectmen on the 15th. And the First Selectman did point out that the order has to be Board of Selectmen first. So I just looked at the calendar, and the Board of Selectmen do meet on May 1st. So I would assume that that would probably be the first date for this project to go to the town bodies. So it would be May 1st for Board of Selectmen, May 9th for Board of Finance, and then the 22nd for committee meetings, RTM, and 28th for the full RTM. That does give us a one-month cushion. So if there are any of the bodies that require additional time, questions, any kind of going back, there is June, and I looked at those dates too, and they do work. It would be kind of tight, and we'd be right up against that June 30th deadline. But it does give us a little bit of a cushion, so. And I will keep everyone updated as we move forward.
Anybody else? Mr. Dwyer?
Just a question, if I could on that. I've, I got the impression that the Building Committee may be recommending not to comply with the educational specs when they make their presentation to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And that we might be put in a position where they vote something opposite the ed specs and then expect us to just comply. Am I, am I wrong in that impression?
Well, I don't know if it was anything explicit. I will say that it was certainly not discussed at the Building Committee level at the meetings I was at. And I did come in kind of late to the Board of Selectmen meeting, so if I missed that explicit, I know Mrs. Vitale and Mrs. Jacobson were there, so perhaps they could speak better to any perception of that. I mean, I do know obviously that, that May 14th special Board of Ed meeting was kind of a red flag to me, because it's not something that we have scheduled. And it seemed like it was kind of in there as a placeholder. Should it need to come back to us, I suppose to amend the ed specs, which would have to happen at some point. But that was not explicitly stated, is my understanding, so. But perhaps someone else can speak to it.
It was not...
I ask one follow-up question.
Yes.
We had asked, I had asked the Building Committee to come and update the Board of Ed. They declined. They declined to do so. Is it possible for us to ask them with more expectation that they would attend, to come to our April meeting, which might be about three weeks before they're going to present their recommendations, and at least give us a heads-up so that we're not reading about it in the newspaper with, when they make a presentation?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to ask Mr. Quinn, and I'm sure Mrs. Vitale would too, and I would just say that anything that's coming out of the Building Committee meetings, I mean, I do go to as many of them as I can. If I start to get a sense that anything is happening, I will be more than happy to, as quickly as possible, alert the board to any changes. But, yeah, I agree, it would be probably helpful to have the Building Committee representatives come to the board before they start going to the other town bodies, but in the meantime, I'll be happy to keep everyone apprised as well.
And I did speak briefly with Mr. Quinn after the Board of Selectmen meeting, because the May 14th date for the, for the Board of Ed had not been discussed, we had not set that date. And I was assured that the Building Committee is not making a recommendation on size, that they will be putting forth three plans with the dollar amount attached to it, and leave it in the hands of the other town boards. I agree that once we, once the committee gets a better idea of the cost for each schematic design, I think that it would be beneficial for the board to hear what those numbers are before it goes to other town bodies. So I rely on Mrs. Gerber to just kind of give, keep us abreast on the timeline, and when we think we need to reach out to see if they can come before us. So, thank you. And, Ms. Jacobson?
My report, but I...
Yeah. Any more questions about Mill Hill? Ms. Jacobson?
Okay. I attended the CAE legislative breakfast this morning for our region, which is Region Six, so kind of around our neighborhoods, and there were other board members from different towns from our region, and a panel of legislators to discuss education issues that may come up this session. So, of course, it's too early, that session does, you know, the session opens tomorrow, it's a very big day, but a common set of themes did arise from other Board of Education members from other municipalities in that discussion and talk today, and not to get too much into them, but common amongst the concerns of other board members that were there when speaking to legislators were the special education co-op, special education funding, ECS formulas, what goes into that, if it could change, mid-year cuts, obviously, and one that Tony Huang, Tony Huang and Kristin McCarthy-Veyhe were both there this morning. And he did mention construction reimbursement rate as, and that was brought up as well by some people, and that, so I'm just raising that in lieu of the Mill Hill conversation as well, that, you know, it is possible going forward that reimbursement could change after this year, which we've always known, that's always a possibility, but even more of a possibility, maybe. So it's food for us and other town bodies going forward on that, that June 30th is June 30th. So, that's it for now on that, but...
Thank you. Ms. Max Canelli?
A question, then a report, and I apologize that I don't know this. Do we have, is anyone in the Fairfield delegation currently now on the Education Committee? I don't know if you know that.
So Kristin did announce last night that she is no longer going to be on the Education Committee. I believe she said that Laura Devlin was, but I haven't seen that out yet, so I don't know the answer to that question right now.
She did report at another meeting that she is off, and Laura Devlin is on.
And Laura Devlin is on.
So there is someone from the Fairfield delegation on that. That could be good for, as a contact person. Okay, thank you. Just very briefly, a policy that we met yesterday to take a look at the life-threatening food allergy policy, as well as the homework policy. So that work is continuing, and as always, if board has heard rumors, rumblings of things, issues that we should be made aware of, I think all three of us would certainly appreciate it, and as well to any member of the public who's listening, you know, if they have interest in the matter, we would certainly be interested in more input than just the three of us. So, thank you.
Any other committee reports? Sherman, their last building committee was canceled last week, just with the holiday, the architects really had nothing to report. They're going to be meeting next Tuesday. Moving forward on that, the drop-off, the Kissimmee drop-off lane, they moved progress. It's going to be, once again, in the back of the school with the cul-de-sac, which is good news, because really, they needed to decide where that drop-off was going to be before they started doing the design for the school. So, moving forward with that, PTA Council, Dr. Jones reported, they had a budget workshop last night, were, thinking that we could be asking for a bigger budget increase, so I'd be curious to hear what their thoughts were after seeing tonight's presentation. They're reaching out to the units just to really kind of get in contact and to attend the brown bag and, you know, be prepared for questions to come your way, because content information was shared. And that is, that is it for PTA Council. Open for comment? Ms. Pitco?
Just want to say, I registered for the Fairfield Economic Outlook Breakfast, which is on the 17th. I think Mike Tetro and, I forget the other presenter.
The economic person from PTA.
Anybody else? Thank you to the staff for all your work in preparing the budget. We will do our best to read it as soon as we can and get you our questions. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, we'll comment.
Oh, Mike.
I want three, baby. I want three.
Any members of the public would like to come forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Darine Herron, 53 Fars Avenue. Thank you so much for answering my questions, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the presentation today. I think the headmasters did a really great job. Had I not had a child attend high school, I think this would have made perfect sense to me, that it makes sense to me, a college prep course, an honors course, AP course, I get it, let's go. But when my daughter started freshman year, the, I kind of drank the Kool-Aid, because the message from the headmasters were, we embrace our electives at Fairfield Lethal High School, at the high schools, and therefore, there's a weight on them. And that was really confusing to me, because I didn't understand, why are we weighting electives? It didn't make any sense. But they continually talked at all of the different, the course nights, PTA meetings, that, well, we weight our electives because we want to encourage people to take them. So it's not that we don't want to have too many AP courses, we don't want to stress our kids out, we want them to explore subjects that are of interest to them. So that's where I'm coming to seeing this new news of changing it, so it's confusing to me, because I didn't think there was a problem. And the message I heard tonight was that the original intent was lost of that grading scale, but I didn't realize that. And I've been a pretty involved parent along, and I, my daughter's applying to colleges now, and it seems to be working well. I do totally agree with changing the course names, that just is for clarity, but one of the main goals that they said was to provide transparency and clarity on transcripts. And I have a problem with that, having a sophomore currently, because I think when she's a senior, when she's applying to colleges, she's going to have three years under this system and then have to report the new grading scale. And although they'll send a letter explaining that, when they say that there's not a bump in college prep courses, there, or that it's the same, it's not the same, because now it's on a 5.0 scale. So before a 4.0, an A, at a college prep course, on a 4.0 scale is a lot different than a 4.0 on a 5.0 scale. So having just had a daughter who applied to colleges, you also have to self-report your scores a lot. So one of the questions that they ask is, what is the highest GPA that you can get at your school? So now I'm going to have my current sophomore applying September of senior year, and just giving an example, if she says she has a 4.0, I'm also going to have to report, well, on the new grading scale, she can get a 5.3. So I, I don't want it to be that simplistic, that we just need to send a letter and let them know, because the college application process is very confusing, and they re-weight things and they unweight things. So I just don't want you to take that lightly, that I think there should be some type of grandfathering for the freshman and sophomore years. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn now? Ms. Pitco, seconded by Ms. Leeper, all in favor? We are adjourned. See everybody next Tuesday.